Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on Monday, November 6th. I call. We're already recording. So I call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Lancaster Select Board for Monday, November 6th at 6:00 PM. Reminder, this is being recorded and broadcast through our friends at the Sterling Lancaster Community Television. I will begin with roll call vote. Mr. Allison.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan is here. We can begin.
Sure.
We have guests coming slash here at 6:05. We're going to do a couple of quick housekeeping matters because if we put it specific time and people are tuning in to see just you, we don't want them to think five minutes they missed. So we will go quickly through down under Section 8. We're going to acknowledge the resignation of Bob Phoney of the Animal Control and Karen Silverthorne of the Community Preservation Committee. We thank them both for their service. And there is an appointment to be made to the Commissioner Commission on Disabilities.
I move to appoint Daryl Blaney to the Commission on Disability, term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Daryl is, my understanding, just re-upping for another term?
Sure. I don't, we can only do them one at a time.
No, who won't? As opposed to a new member, so yes.
Right.
Yes, thank you first, yes, thank for continued service.
Thank Daryl for the service to the town. And I'd ask for all those in favor signify so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Congratulations, Daryl, for your service communications, usually done at the end of the meeting, but town offices will be closed on Friday, November 10th, this coming Friday, in observance of Veterans Day. The Select Board Finance Committee FY25 Budget Meeting will be held on Saturday, November 18th, 2023, at 8:30 AM in this very room. So come on by, it's going to be gobsmacked fun. This is the same thing we did last year, which I think led to a really productive budget season. And I thank Kate and all the directors who I know are department heads who are getting ready for this meeting as we speak, so thank you for that. Next, our next Select Board meetings will be held on Monday, November 20th, 2023, and Monday, December 4th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, also in this very room. And now we can go back up and do approval of the minutes. We have minutes for October 2nd and October 16th.
I'll offer a motion to approve the regular meeting agendas, Monday, October 2nd, 2023, and the regular meeting agendas for October 6th. Minutes, I'm sorry. Minutes for October 16th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? If there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes are approved, yes.
Actually, there's someone remote is saying that they're hard to hear on the volume.
Okay, can you undo it?
There's a gain on the, on the volume control?
I don't know.
On the mic, I mean, to make it louder?
I don't know.
Kate, any of that making sense?
Hello?
Hello? Hi. How are you?
Can, can the remote folks hear okay?
Frank Streeter, can you hear us?
I can now.
Oh, aren't you nice? I was.
Thank you.
Ralph, give her does a thumbs up?
So it's improved.
But this, if anybody, if anybody can't hear us, let us know. I'm kidding. Okay. We have one minute of us dragging our feet, and then we are going to turn over to our Mass Development friends for presentation. So what's new? It, it's cold, is that?
It just turned.
It turned, yes.
Okay, well, those of you watching at home, it's cold in here, so. If you want to join along, open a window, put on a sweater.
It just changed.
Everybody have a nice weekend.
Congratulations.
Okay, it's 6:05. That took enough time, right? Kate?
See, we did that heat just to take some time.
Well, I think you did the air conditioning.
I actually think I'm just a little off tonight, I don't know. It senses me.
All right, well, why don't we barrel ahead with you two, and then we can go from there. Mass Development presentation, would you like to kick it off?
So we have been chatting about the Decam property, and we went over some of the concepts last time, and big thank you to Mass Development, who we've had a partnership with for some time, and actually, we're extending just a little bit, a little bit over because we were delayed on getting access to the site. And we've been working with BSC Group and devised a bunch of conceptual things that you all went over, and I was able to speak at the Affordable Housing Trust. Again, just to be clear, there are no decisions that are being made other than going forward with a more robust public process to try to figure out if this is something, any of the ideas that are in this concept for reuse are something that the community wants to go through with. The one thing that I think is important, which I said it, affordable housing, is the holding cost for the property relative to fencing and some minimal electricity and security, you know, will run somewhere in the $100,000 a year range, and so I think it's important that there's some concept that we are, we, meaning the town, is comfortable with enough that they think that it's worthwhile to have that kind of holding cost, because some of the concepts will have, might necessitate zoning amendments, et cetera, so, you know, holding it for a year would probably be the shortest time. It, it could even be, you know, 18 months or something like that. So I think that's an important thing to consider as, as we go through, but these are not construction drawings, it's 100% conceptual, nobody's making any decisions, it really is just for the board to outline a process moving forward.
And this is, just a reminder, folks, at home in the room, this is the property on Old Common Road, that was the old state school, then MCI Lancaster, and was offered by the Commonwealth for a dollar, somewhere around 80 acres, depending on how it all shakes out, because I know there's some different divisions with some pieces of parcel of land, to the town. We went to town meeting to move the ball forward. We're continuing, this is a furtherance of that process to decide what to do with this piece of property should the town accept it from the Commonwealth. It is a great opportunity for us, and now we're going to keep rolling down the road. Next, of course, will be a lot of public participation in the next sort of iterative piece of this, of this process.
Yep, so I'm going to hand it over to Amanda, who can, yep.
Right from up there. Just say your name clearly.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Amanda Gregoire, I am Director of Site Planning and Real Estate at Mass Development. I know we already kind of covered it, but tonight, we're here to share the culmination of some planning work we've been doing in partnership with the town related to the Decam property located on Old Common Road. This work was made possible through Mass Development's Real Estate Technical Assistance Program. I know the Select Board has seen some previous iterations of these conceptual drawings that we have undertaken over time in partnership and with help from Kate and her team, and we use the feedback from those iterations to develop a final fourth concept, concept that we will be sharing and running through with you tonight. I just wanted to take a brief opportunity to thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and present to you, and I wanted to make sure to thank Kate and, and her team for all of their work over the past several months. They've been fantastic partners in coordinating different information needed from all of the different departments to help BSC put these plans together for us. So without further ado, I know everyone's excited to see this, so I'm going to turn it over to Heather Gould, she's the Director of Planning at BSC Group and our consultant. She's going to give you just a very brief refresher on the concepts that you've talked about previously and dive into more detail about this fourth and, and final concept that we have to share with you tonight.
Heather?
Good evening, so if you could go to the next slide, please? So just to, to reiterate where our focus area is, the site itself is approximately 80 acres, we're really focused on those 35 acres, access points coming off of Still River Road and Old Common Road, but really looking at where the buildings were kind of, are kind of, you know, focused on the site. Next slide. Proposed concepts, so in terms of the, the original concepts that we proposed, we were looking at a lower density development, which was just new construction residential, we were looking at an adaptive reuse with some new construction and a mixed-use opportunity, saving a couple of buildings that were there now and converting them for adaptive reuse with a mix of residential thrown in there, and looking at open space and community space as well. And then the third concept was new construction, mixed-use residential at a higher density in saving one particular building for senior housing concept. We have heard through past studies that have been done on the site that there is a huge concern about traffic on Old Common Road. So in each scenario that we looked at, we really focused on trying to push that traffic onto Still River Road versus having the main entrance for the site be Old Common Road. So with that, you'll see in this final concept here, number four, that we're really trying to reinforce that traffic pattern. Concept four, adaptive reuse, we're looking at the adaptive reuse of two buildings, and there's a little bit of a difference in color here between the different buildings themselves. So the ones that are being saved or restored are a little bit darker than new construction. And then we have a commercial concept in, in this with the two lighter, yep, those two lighter buildings there. So looking at this program, we focus lower density, single-family residential off of Old Common Road, and then we step that, that to town homes for, you know.
Sorry, that's eight houses down on Old Common Road, is that?
Correct. Yes. And it's very hard for me to see over here.
Yes, sorry.
So we have kind of this mixed-use core right here.
Yeah.
Where we have housing, and then we have commercial, and then we have more housing here in apartment buildings. And then we have senior housing here with an additional senior housing, some units here. We have this nice little linear park to help with kind of traffic and circulation through the site, access off of Still River Road, an opportunity for access off of Old Common, but really trying to push that traffic that way. We have townhomes over here, and there are two different sized townhomes. We show the difference being that there is garages incorporated into some of them versus having parking on the outside. And then looking at kind of community space, the playing fields, we love that they're there, we want to keep them, having a small area for a playground even over here. And then looking at this overall, we have the commercial space being about 7,500 square foot, footprints, which could be separated into different units, so you could have two units per building here, those are single-story. Looking at the residential apartment buildings right now, they're programmed so that, you know, this is an adaptive reuse, three-story, we have a nice little plaza area here, and then we have a three-story residential here. We stepped down the next two buildings to be two-story residential, knowing that there is concern about large apartment buildings and units that can come with that. The program is flexible enough that you could make those three-story buildings as well.
So the one in the middle is the three-story, and the other two are two-story?
Correct. In this program.
And the original building is still, well, obviously, three stories.
Yes. And then over here on the senior housing component, we have the three-story building here with a two-story building here. Additionally, the dashed lines you see here are kind of like a walking trail around and throughout the site. So overall, we're looking at about 192 housing units total between the single-family residential, the townhouses, and the apartment buildings, along with the senior housing. We're looking at about 15,000 square feet of commercial space here, and that commercial space we're looking at as being kind of service retail, lifestyle retail, however you want to look at it. And then we have shown a little over 400 parking spaces on the site. So throughout the site, and we have little numbers associated with how much parking could fit there, but we feel based on the formulas we use, based on the housing units, the different sizes of the units, that that would be sufficient parking. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. So I just want to orient everyone to that, to these next few kind of bird's eye view looks on the site. This is looking down on the site from Old Common Road, Still River Road is toward the back of the site. And you can see the two circles here, that shows the two buildings that we're talking about reusing, adaptively reusing. Next slide, please. And then for this concept, this is our aerial view looking from kind of that same angle, maybe a little bit lower, of the site at buildout. So you'll see the concept here, you can tell that that's kind of a linear roadway, you've got the single-family houses, the townhouses, the larger buildings, and you can tell that those were the two buildings that remain. Next slide. And then this is just the opposite direction from Still River Road looking out, you have the playing fields, you have the commercial, you can see the density is different with the, the one-story commercial. Our concern is the site may not support, you know, a higher density in terms of commercial based on the location, based on the neighborhood around it, so. And then the next slide.
Let's go, it's just slow.
Yeah. And then this is just another kind of street view of current, and then how it could look if you were to look down the corridor with the single-family houses constructed, and a couple of close-up shots of some of the features of the site as we've designed it in our, our 3D model.
Usually we could, on the upper right, you could have, in theory, we could ask to try to maintain as many trees as possible.
Correct. The, I didn't want to distort the view with the trees there, you wouldn't be able to see the buildings.
It's just shocking to see trees, there are no trees, so trying to make that point that.
Yes.
They can still be there, great.
Most of the trees, I think, along there now are those hemlocks and our, our, like a green fence that were planted, so I don't think there's a whole lot of street trees right there existing, but we'd have to look.
Those trees, you can see what your flash is.
Do you want me to go to the last slide?
Yeah.
And then just in terms of final thoughts, as I mentioned, concept four could accommodate additional density by adding certain floors. If the concept were to be strictly a mixed residential development with no commercial, the density could be even higher than that, you could make three-story apartment buildings in those locations where that commercial space was programmed. Looking at this concept now, in terms of housing density, it's around five and a half units per acre based on the 35-acre area. If it becomes just strictly residential, that density could go up to between seven and eight units per acre, depending. You know, demolition of historic buildings requires close coordination with Mass Historic Commission, pre-development and redevelopment actions may trigger the local permitting process, along with state and federal permitting, depending on funding sources, depending on different project threshold triggers. There was an awareness of the potential for a town liability through the site acquisition from Decam because there is some environmental contamination that is part of the present site that we kind of did not consider because it's in the wetland area near Still River Road. And then just the proximity of the 21E site and its impact to potential water supply area that's been discussed over the years, so we didn't consider that 15 acres for our redevelopment concepts, and just responsible parties for the maintenance and management of any open space that does happen as a result of any development there, and public water and sewer capacity for the site, and any potential limitations that they have on that.
Okay, well, thank you. Definitely captured a lot of the thoughts, I think, a lot of us had about the different other iterations and innovative iterations, I appreciate that. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments or thoughts?
I'll go first, yeah, I've seen a rendition of this like three times now, which is awesome, and the visuals here are great, I'm really excited about continuing to have these conversations and figuring out what's best for town and area residents.
Okay. Ms. Turner?
So this is the first time I've seen concept four.
Yes.
Which is, which is a nice hybrid, I think, with what, what community input there has been and board input, it responds to that well, so thank you very much. It's also nice to see the, I think everybody loves 3D renderings, us, older board members, looking at those old blueprints, you know, this really brings it to life. I do have a lot of questions, and I don't know if this is the time because I know there's a lot, well, there's other things on our agenda too, but going back to, could you go back, Kate, to the last slide? I'll just try to hit some of the high notes. I think we need to get some community input, but, so I think the last.
Yeah, we are definitely, the next phase of this is getting community input and engage in the town and charades some conversations, for sure.
So public water and sewer capacity for this site, you're probably aware of, or I'm, I expect you're aware, do you know how much sewer capacity is already allocated for the space, because I understand our sewer capacity is so limited, not by a consent decree and by the flow, by literally, by, because Nashua is a low-flow river? So assuming that, assuming the worst, assuming that we can't get sewer, many people can't get sewer in town right now, is this viable with this density?
I'm not an engineer, so I'm going to throw out that disclaimer. I think the biggest, the biggest analysis that will have to be done is how, how much septic can hold for redevelopment at that site and where the location can be for it. With townhomes, depending on how they're clustered and depending on how much open space is needed around them, you could program open space around it or buffer area around it to have where the septic is. In terms of the apartment buildings, that I can't answer, you know, so.
Can we, Mass Development, follow up on that, because that's a good question. When we throw in RFP for developers, answering questions like how are you going to tackle, here are limited water and sewer capacity, how would you tackle that if you were to tackle development, that can all be included in the RFP so we can gauge the different responses based on their submissions and how they would tackle that, right?
Absolutely, I would expect you'd want to include that so you can evaluate their different approaches with it, for sure.
There are ways to do package plans and different things around on-site, but it depends on how, how dense you're doing that. The other thing is, so I've walked the campus many a time, back in the old days, first job was up there, so I've seen it. The, there is some beautiful curves and meandering areas and some large trees, heritage trees, it has a very nice feel, the character, they called, you know, the old center and so on. So I know that the buildings have been looked at, and there's some, some of them are beyond question, not rehabable. I guess everything is rehabable, depends on if it's practical for the money, and I've been on the other, I've been on the wrong side where I've gone too far, so I understand that it has to be attractive to a developer. But I was happy that you were saving two buildings in this last iteration. But doing things in, in character of the town and so on is, is important, and, you know, the public can comment on that. The 21E site, I'm assuming you talked about the old power plant? Yeah, so that had a circular listing, and I thought that that was because any developers could want to know that, and I'm sure that that is, that it was pretty much cleaned up, but there are limitations on what you can do in that particular area.
Which is limited, it's not included in the.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, we talked about excluding that.
Yeah.
Right, from the legislation.
Right, and so, but some.
We won't even take it, part of the town.
I understand that, the state mayor, you know, will see how the state, because nobody wants to get stuck with.
They're already, they already own it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So we just wouldn't.
But a lot of that area is also wetlands as well.
It is.
And so that was the thought when they were cleaning it up, was well, nobody's going to be able to use it anyway. The density that you talked about, both the existing density and if you went all residential and went higher, some of the things that were suggested at the Affordable Housing Trust, but at, at other things, because we're trying to meet our MBTA zoning, 40R zoning, doesn't, the density would have to be higher, so is there a way to achieve that, particularly if you have to do on-site septic or something, by clustering higher and making the site, reconfiguring the site? Because I don't think people, there's a lot of units here, we're looking at, how many residential units was it?
192.
Okay. So people are going to look at that because we do need housing desperately, but as we sit here and we're going into budget season, we also know the impact to services is, is a big budget driver, and we're about to build a new school that didn't anticipate a spike in students, we'd have to look at a cost of services to see how many students this would bring. But the, if, if we were able to get this denser so we could look at, without increasing the numbers a lot, but denser by plenty, but to try to look at solving the 40R and MBTA solutions, that would be fantastic. And that's, I guess, not maybe you, maybe that's more us.
Yeah, I think it's definitely, it's something going towards, it's further down the process.
Yeah, it's just sort of, you know, I'm not putting that on your shoulders, but it's a, it's a response.
And also for the town people paying attention, there, there was plug-in numbers based on school growth, based on developing projects like this around the town when we did the school, so this is not, these numbers would not be new for the school project that we just approved, because those were, but they were, just to be very clear to the folks watching and paying attention here, numbers were plugged in for the estimates.
Somewhere, somewhere, but he just said that they didn't anticipate much growth, because I think Mr. Tressel pushed back on that one, and so.
Right, just, just want to be very clear.
We can ask him any day.
This isn't new compared to the conversation.
We can ask him much. And so I, you know, I could go on, but obviously, this sounds like this is a kickoff to some ideas. Speaking as somebody who's worked with developers in the past, I find these concepts are great, mostly to stimulate community interest, important to be able, for us mere mortals, to visualize. But I think that for developers, and that's what I'm, it's helpful to have as much flexibility as possible. For example, if they wanted to use the existing roadways and not have a linear park but still have a park, that's something that we have to talk about, can we do that, because so much of the construction costs. So anyway, thank you for the inspiring look.
And remind you, this is very early, those are iterations for, and illustrations for the process that we're in to bring to the town, then those concepts will, after the town set input, go to an RFP process for developers to submit.
And more for us.
Yeah, but I just have one question.
I'm sorry.
In the single-family homes, it seemed to list, I can't remember, but it was, it seemed like a lot square footage per home, which seems a little out of character with the homes in the neighborhood, is there a reason why we set that number, is it just a placeholder?
I think on average, 2,000 square feet.
Oh, it was 2,000, I thought it was, my eye said 3,000, so, okay, good.
Eighteen to 2,000.
Oh, perfect, 1,800 to 2,000 is fine, thank you, sorry.
With a garage.
With a garage.
Garage.
That's nice. One or two, no, good.
It's a complex, a complex fast.
That's great, fantastic, thank you, that's very helpful. helpful.
After that, I have a question about the process.
I was just gonna ask for the process, plus, you can sit down if you'd like. You can stand there if you want, that's fine. Next steps. I would, what I would suggest is that we task Kate with the process of developing sort of next phase, public engagement, and I'm glad to work with you on what you think is best, working with our partners, what they've seen. I spoke with, I saw Dan Rivera, the head of Mass Development this morning in Capitol Copio, some people helped each other, wearing the same shirt, which was odd. Not the same actual one, it's just the same design one, it'd be even weirder if it was the same one. And he was so excited about this Lancaster project, given that Mass Development's doing projects all across the Commonwealth, because he really believes that if we do this as well as we're on the pathway to do it, it can be a real showcase for the Commonwealth. So, I think we've got some really good ideas, you guys have really good experience that can help us, so if we can, the four of us can work together to sort of outline a public process that we can come back to the board and outline for the, for the residents and then get rolling. Does that make sense? Two thumbs up for Mr. Allison.
Just make sure to include the board in this.
I just said, we're gonna come up with a, we're gonna come up with a process and bring it to the board for approval to bring to the, so that's how we're gonna include the board.
So may I ask another question about process?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. The, the RFP, we talked about the holding costs and trying to make sure that we spend that money efficiently and the time. It's my understanding and looking at other projects across the state, that you can issue an RFP well prior to taking the land, so that at ti, at the closing time, you're ready to turn it over to the development of choice. So if we issued an RFP, say in six months, and we didn't take it, I think our deadline is December of next year, is that right?
July.
July, it was, it was December, we got it kicked to July.
July, okay. So that would give us less risk of the, of the carrying cost?
For me, I think we're gonna rely on our partners at Mass Development to give us good advice on the RFP scheduling and process, but obviously you're aware, carrying costs are a big, a big concern for us, and making sure that we don't get stuck with it, and we hopefully get.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is the legislation hasn't yet passed, and so for us to take on the financial obligation for an RFP without the legislation passing would not seem to be financially prudent.
No.
What does it cost to issue an RFP? Is it, I was just thinking, compared to the holding cost, it would be minimal, right?
Well, but we're not doing, we're not doing either until the legislation passes, because we're not...
So my, so my thought is, as in other cities and towns have done, some others and cities have done, you issue it in advance of the legislation, yes, there's an expense to issue an RFP.
But just because they have an engineer on staff. So you need an OPM, an owner's project manager usually, and, and I am not an engineer, so I act as OPM for like smaller projects that would be, you know, the tennis court resurfacing and things like that for the bidding process only, but for this, you would, you would want to hire a firm to basically oversee the process and to be able to answer questions, issue addendum, meet with the developers, and the, all of that is, would also require an access agreement with DCAM that would have to be drafted by legal. So, I mean, it's not cost prohibitive, but it certainly, we would want the legislation to be further along in the process than it is right now.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much, both of you. To Amanda and Heather, thank you for coming in, and I'm sure we'll be seeing an awful lot of each other as this process rolls on. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, chiefs of fire and police. Not in that order because I don't want to look like I'm, you know, playing favorites, but, perfect. Chiefs, welcome. Ta-da.
All right, there we are. So, go back to, just start at the very beginning with, so this is just a quick presentation from your Lancaster Public Safety team. Mike and myself have got together trying to combat the issues that are plaguing public safety. Some of that has to do with manpower, some of it has to do with being financially responsible. So we've come up with what we believe is a successful solution to some of those issues, and we're calling it the Drive to Keep You Alive Initiative. Next page. Drive to Keep You Alive Initiative is sponsored by the Police, EMS, and Fire Departments simultaneously. Next one. And so what is it and why do we need it? What is it? It's a public safety partnership between police, EMS, and fire personnel. New regulations allow police officers to drive an ambulance in certain situations. This program permits us to do more for those in need. As police recognize and reprioritize our role in the community, we are expanding beyond traditional crime-fighting mentality and welcoming new opportunities to increase the quality of care for our residents. So why does Lancaster need it? Public safety, especially on-call emergency personnel, participation has decreased dramatically over the last five years. Lancaster has not been immune to this trend. People are busier, and the extensive training and education required have created barriers for part-time involvement in a certified capacity. So Lancaster finds itself struggling to keep up with the growing demands on EMS services while maintaining a financially responsible budget.
So read it.
Yeah, read it.
Partnership equals progress.
There you go. Good job. So this plan puts police in the driver's seat, literally. So we're increasing service, decreasing the time on scene, having the potential to save lives. This is built on the premise that cross-training police and EMS will generate a new standard of care for Lancaster residents. And creating highly-trained, hybrid police EMS officers results in a more complete public safety team. Essentially, what we're trying to create here is one call does it all.
You read it one more read?
I do, every time.
Progression drives chemistry standards forward.
So the reason behind the drive is...
You only get to read the footers, so...
Yeah.
There's one here, so you're in trouble.
No, yeah, I'm giving it a break. These work so hard on this. So did you know the Lancaster Police sends a police cruiser on almost all medical calls? So allowing us to jump in the driver's seat is just a natural extension of the service we already provide. This one step increases the success in the rate in the chain of survival at almost every event. So the chain of survival is a concept developed by the American Heart Association. It includes the components that must be in place to increase patients' chance of survival, especially in the case of sudden cardiac arrest. Simply stated, time matters. So we anticipate the natural progression of the partnership will be strengthened, working relationship between public safety departments, increasing efficiency, safety, but most importantly, patient care. So I know the, we're in budget season, so this is the big one that everybody wants to know, how much will it cost?
We're always in budget season, chief.
Absolutely, absolutely. So this, this program is designed to operate under the existing police and fire department budgets. Police officers will receive a stipend only when the service is utilized. Funding will come from the existing fire department's budget, and it'll be offered at half the rate of what an on-call response would be. I'll let Mike get into the, the financials after we're done with this, but resulting right off the bat with a financial savings. EMS will receive the help required to maintain call volume and lower Lancaster's dependence on mutual aid, again, resulting in a financial savings. This, this time it's increased billable accounts and accounts receivable. The opportunity to implement a potentially life-saving program in Lancaster, we would all agree, it's priceless.
Was Mike supposed to say that?
No, I get...
Oh, you know the smaller one, okay, got it.
It's not doing more with less, it's doing what we need with what we have.
Ah, look at the clever.
So, increasing accounts receivable is important for a couple of reasons, but Lancaster, like most municipalities, sets billable rates for services provided by our ambulance. This process follows strict guidelines and allows Lancaster to recover important other costs associated with the staff required, supplies needed, training issued, and vehicles required to offer top-of-the-line EMS service. Roughly 78% of the calls result in basic light transport, with an average collection of $500 per call. Every time Lancaster utilizes mutual aid for a BLS service, we forfeit our rights to collection. This program increases Lancaster's option for collection, but also we retain our rights for customer forgiveness. Early estimates, we believe that we can recapture up to $50,000 a year in savings.
Keeping Lancaster at the driver's seat.
There one queue card away from...
Very good, I'll tell you.
So the summary is, is without change, there could be no change, and this program sets the stage and creates a new standard in public safety, maximizing life-saving opportunities and paving the way for other municipalities to follow. And a financially responsible program that lessens Lancaster reliance on, and burden on our neighbor and communities, this is Lancaster, helping Lancaster.
Innovation today sets the stage for tomorrow.
I appreciate the pointing.
Any other questions, I'm sure you guys have?
First, thank you, I mean, that's, this, thank you and the members of both your departments for the innovative thinking and approach to this, because it not only tack, I mean, it's the best of all the world, right? You've got people working together to solve a common problem, brings in resources, saves those resources, and increases the response time to save lives. I mean, it's, it's this really fantastic collaboration, and you see the smile on Kate's face because she's very, very proud of the team she works with. This type of collaboration is really what local government's about and what, and one of the reasons why I'm really, really proud to sit in this seat. So I just say thank you for the work that you all have done to bring this to us. I'm excited to take a move to endorse this policy because I think it's a fantastic policy, and my only one caveat is that every year, Chief Hanson has to come back and give us an update, but during the appointing, the entire time he's doing it. Oh wait, do you have another slide, do you want to read some?
Oh no, it's not another slide, just some additional information.
Ah, do you have any additional information, Chief Hanson?
The ambulance department runs under a medical director. Ours is Dr. Broach on a UMass Worcester. I don't have all his credentials, he's got quite a few, but I reached out to him on this and he 100% endorses and supports us. Everything we do on the ambulance falls under his direction and his approval, and through his leadership for us, over the last, through COVID, we've been allowed to do more as a BLS level, and he's endorsed us. So Lancaster is one of the only towns in the area that actually utilizes all the BLS skills we're allowed to under the state with his approval. So there are certain drugs we can give now, there's certain things we can do that does increase life safety, especially in cardiac events. Dr. Broach is a huge proponent of everything we do, so once he heard about this, he thought it was amazing that police and fire are able to work together on this and see it go further in the future. And to just touch on a little bit of the finances, I mean, I can say, so far this year, we're probably out around $42,000 because of mutual aid. And it has to do with staffing, because call departments, not just Lancaster, everyone around us across the country and the state are having trouble recruiting and retaining.
Can you pause here, just trying to make sure folks understand that through mutual aid, since we have an agreement, if we need your help, or if we need our help, we come free of charge and help you do that service, we provide the ambulance service, so we can't bill for it. If we did it ourselves, we could bill for it through insurance or Medicare/Midicaid, but through mutual aid, because of that agreement, which is fantastic and hugely beneficial, we can't bill for that. So if we have the staff on hand and we do it ourselves as a community, we can bill for it.
And a lot of the time, like, we get one person to respond, so the idea of the police officer being able to jump in allows us to do the call and not, because we're still paying the one person to respond to start care while we can mutual aid. And quite honestly, mutual aid is strange and the other departments are already having the same issue as us. So it's, it's a win-win all the way around, and I'm happy to get it going, we have a little training to do with the two departments, and we'll get it going.
So that leads to my last two questions. First, how long will training take?
Probably should only take a night, it's just to get the police officer familiar with the ambulance.
Because they have the same license rating and all that stuff, okay. My second, and I, this isn't really a question, it's more of a mentioning it, to mention how significant this is, but that the fire department no longer has a union, but the police department does, and this, I'm, I know the answer to this, but I'm assuming that the collective bargaining unit goes along with this and is supportive of, because of the union membership, we'll be doing most of the driving.
Absolutely, yeah. The union president was a very large advocate and supporter of this, brought it to the union membership, and they unanimously support the union.
That's another sign of a great agreement, so, thank you. Do you both have any questions for the chiefs?
No, just thank you, Lancaster, very lucky to have both of you, and from my position on the boards, you both have my unequivocal support.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Like Steve and Jason, I think it's a fantastic idea, and I look forward to wholeheartedly endorsing it. I always have my eye on the, you know, worst case, the what-ifs and everything else, so just a couple of questions, make sure we work out the kinks here, or there, is I know when the police department goes to an accident scene, it's often to do site control, and I've seen people do crazy things like drive through barricades and everything else when you're trying to help somebody. I'm assuming you have some, have thought about if the officer is actually helping somebody, what's that, what happens?
Yeah, so we have a policy put in place where the officer in charge, which is most likely going to be a sergeant, has a strict set of guidelines on when they allow an officer to jump in the driver's seat. So it isn't gonna be on every call, if there are police services that are required, that is primary, they'll stay on scene, but in, in the event that they are not needed for any police-related work, they are free to go to assist our community.
Okay. The other thing is, I was excited to hear that it sounds like our BPS is getting even more efficient, because we've had the talk about ALS, because a lot of our mutual aid calls are ALS calls that go to what, Sterling and Bolton? And you're not gonna be able to replace those with BPS, but it sounds like we're making progress, am I right, in less of those, or routing less of those, or?
Well, because ALS is set by a protocol, which falls under Dr. Broach. The state sets it, and then Dr. Broach allows us to lessen it. So our dispatch center has what's called Emergency Medical Dispatch, so when you call 911, they have certain questions they ask you. Depending how you answer them, that triggers ALS. So by OMS standard, they have to call ALS. We can cancel them, we can get there and realize it's, because all the time, it's not always, whatever you call 914 isn't always what you find. So a lot of the time, we do cancel ALS, they'll get on scene, they'll triage it down, so there is no cost for them coming over at that point. And they do their own billing. We, Sterling, we have a billing agreement with and with Bolton. So they bill separately, we bill separately. So we get our money for the BLS pilot, and they do an ALS fee.
That makes sense.
And it hopefully covers it for the, the resident.
And that's the important part about keeping it in Lancaster, because if mutual aid comes in and they're doing the billing, they're in control of the forgiveness rate. I know Mike has a policy that if, if insurance only pays the 300 bucks, the forgiveness is given there, and we're not going after anyone, especially seniors, who are almost paying bills. If, if we sell everything out to mutual aid, we give up that right, so this, this keeps that power and control here, which I think is very important for the community.
And it's even worse on a private side, if a private ambulance comes in, they don't set their standard, their billing, like, our billing comes from you guys, you guys help me set it. They have no limit, they can go $2,000, $3,000, they can put leans on your property, so private EMS can do a lot more, and that's not what we're looking to do. We're looking to make sure our residents can afford the healthcare.
I think it's, I think it's admirable, and it creates, you know, the key part about our fire and police department is, is a small enough town that you know a lot of the people, you know, most people, they get to know you, and this offers them more opportunities, so thank you.
Thank you, chiefs. Is there a vote to endorse this policy?
There's a motion to fully endorse the Drive to Keep You Alive policy presented by Chief Edward Moody and Chief Michael Hanson.
Supposed to do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's a favor seen by, by, say aye.
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 Aye. Thanks, chiefs. Thank you, Kate.
I have one more thing.
One more thing, which is really exciting and important.
Yep. Last Thursday, we had two new recruits graduating from the Mass Call Volunteer Academy. And a little bit about the academy, just so people understand, there's two academies. There's the Career Academy, which is 11 to 12 weeks, it's full-time, Monday through Friday, because it's what their job is. There's the Mass Call Vol, which is about four months of nights and weekends, a total of 240 hours. These guys go to work every day or school, and then they dedicate... and then they dedicate their time, on their time to go to the Fire Academy. So over the last four months, they participated in the academy. They went, did it, passed, graduated last week. So they are both, um, our newest firefighter one-twos for the department, firefighter Matt Watson and Zach Gordon. And on top of that, each Mass Call class, um, they pick their top student. Um, that student gets an award, which is called the Martin H. McNamara Award, which was designed after Lancaster firefighter Martin McNamara died in the line of duty in 2003. Um, the Massachusetts Fire Council, Training Council is the one that presents it and it's usually presented to the, um, top student in the class on academic performance, um, practical skill performance, um, and just overall performance in the class. Um, this year, and it's the first year that a Lancaster firefighter has received that award, which was firefighter Watson. You want to stroll over here? You want me to?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Do you mind taking a picture with the three of you?
Sure. What are you, 6'3" or 6'4"?
Somewhere along those lines. About 6'3".
Something like 6'4", something like, you don't know your own height. I had that I'd have attempted on my bench.
Can you stand by the podium?
Oh, by the podium. I'm sure.
Do we want the Lancaster symbol of the model?
Here, you're a tall guy.
Yeah, you get behind the podium.
You won the award.
Does he make it short?
Everyone makes it short.
I love it.
Yes, yes, yeah. He's not wearing heels.
Will he have boots on?
Yeah.
All right. Smile. Smile. Okay.
Congratulations again. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda. There's something I will read now. Mr. Muley, I believe it involves you. Yes?
Yes, although I'm just going to do a little preamble.
You are, okay. Um, or preamble. Um, all right. Next item on the general revitalization of the library museum. Our library director, Joe Muley, is joining us. Thank you, Mr. Muley.
You're having us.
Mr. Streeter is on.
Yes.
And we have Emily Rose is here too. Oh, oh, there they are.
They're all over there.
Hello. All I saw was Emily in that corner.
So I just wanted to share my screen to kind of give an, uh, you all an understanding of where this idea sort of came from. And, um, it's sort of in keeping with, uh, what both chiefs were talking about, which is, um, the, the ability for collaboration between departments. And so, um, these are photos of some of the vital record storage that are in the Old Town Hall. So a lot of that storage came over here, um, when the town moved, when it was relevant to the departments that were here and, um, when they had, you know, the last, say, five years or so. But a lot of the things were kept, um, over in the Old Town Hall. And these are perfectly fine because they're inside one of the vaults that are there. Um, but they're not particularly well organized. Um, what you can see is these are, um, less, uh, the one here on the right, uh, less organized and in some cases, unfortunately, uh, not kept in metal storage bins, et cetera. And, um, as you know, there's, the building is deteriorating a bit over there. And so while the ground floor and the second floor are still very usable, the basement level, um, has sustained some water damage and it was water damaged from many, many years ago and it, it continues to sort of deteriorate. And so we went over, meaning we staff went over during one of, um, one of our sort of, uh, we do something a couple of times a year where we do, uh, have a cleanup together as a, as a team building. And we went over there and we were able to move some of the boxes with, you know, papers and files up to the second floor. That's not being used right now, just to get them out of the area. But then, um, I, I spoke to Joe about it because, um, as, you know, just having his own records and, um, and collection, uh, he was talking with, with our town clerk about record storage and, and what we need to do to make sure that we're preserving vital records and going through what might be duplicates, what might be records that we don't need, um, and going through the process of how to get rid of those legally. And then there's a lot of things that are hanging on the walls in there from, um, the former select board room, the former, um, town of ministers offices, a lot in the planning office that are really very neat and cool and, um, kind of sitting over there for no one to really enjoy, one. And, and two, some of them that are in the basement are really starting to, to crinkle and, and crumble. So, um, the idea here, uh, so we, we moved some of these things into storage containers that while not waterproof by any means, they're better than just having them lying out. You can see here in the back, these are actually all the old subdivision maps. And a lot of those are actually really useful, um, not only for residents, but just for boards and, and committees to be able to go through. And when we, um, a builder and developer came in for 696 Fort Pond Road, which has been going on now for about a year, um, the former planning director and now the current planning director is sort of looking for some of the, um, as-bills from that area. And, um, it's very difficult to find. And so I ended up picking, um, Joe's brain about how we would go about digitizing things, um, having permanent record storage to make sure that things that should be kept, like there's live, uh, birth and, and death records that are there that, you know, date back for a really long time. There's also, um, uh, registers of people who paid their taxes from like in the 1700s written in, in these books that are just out there that, um, just are, are neat and have some, some significance. Um, and so anyway, so he, um, he graciously went over and started looking. Um, this in particular is sort of what we found. Uh, we, you know, we're going through some of these boxes. It looks like, um, you know, these old files that are here, these are all old maps, but you, you don't know what they're, what they are. You don't know what neighborhood they are. So the ability to be able to utilize some of this. Um, and then I, I actually got a tour of, um, of the museum that, um, that the library has that's there. And it looks like there might be some things that are here that could be useful, um, to them and the community frankly, to have sort of a one-stop shopping. They also have, um, their own special collections and archive area that certainly is much more conducive to taking care of paper vital records or books or things like that. And while it isn't a huge amount of room that's there, um, the idea of at least, um, itemizing what we have and then figuring out what we absolutely need to save legally and then what we should save, you know, for, for whatever reason is, is important. Um, and so these are just some of the rooms that have, there's a lot of pictures. There's, um, a full, uh,
Christmas tree?
Well, that, that's probably. But there were buckets filled with headshots of every select board member that, that there ever was.
Oh, my pictures are terrible.
So, um, you know, and, uh, those don't have a home. Um, and maybe you don't want them to have a home, but they, they should, they should be somewhere. Um, so anyway, that, that's sort of what we're looking at. Um, that was the revitalization here. We, um, did our, put some money away in the capital budget last year for some records retention, which we've been using for birth and death records and real estate transactions because those are the most important to make sure that we have. And the clerk is working, uh, really well on that. But I'm going to hand it over to Joe now. So, um, you can.
Take it away, Joe.
Uh, I'm here at your pleasure. What do you want me to, what do you want to know?
Well, first I love the, I, uh, I love the idea because it reminds, it reminds me and should remind everybody that libraries, what you talk about all the time, Joe, these libraries aren't just places for books. It's, they're dynamic, active spaces that can play a role throughout the community. And so I'm, I, uh, I'm excited, uh, for your willingness to take on a project like this, uh, and frankly, to see what we have that can revitalize the museum that you have over there. But, um, just want to know what your sort of thoughts are as we start this process. It will be arduous, no doubt.
Yeah. I want to share, um, a conversation Kate and I had way back. I don't know if it was earlier this year or late last year. Uh, Elizabeth Cahill, who's a Lancaster resident and a history teacher at the Waukesus Regional High School.
It was before town meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
And, you know, kind of just, uh, it just happened that I was in the museum with her and she said, you know, we're going to be doing a, a Civil War, uh, lesson and all the students from around the school are going to be, uh, what do you think about maybe? Where I might've said, yeah, you know, this stuff would go well with that. She said, yeah, it would. And the conversation then was how do I exhibit that stuff there? And you love collaboration. Well, the police chief gave us, uh, rifle cases and handgun cases for all the Civil War era stuff. Uh, and we brought those munitions, sabers, and the kids loved it. So I was pretty proud. And so I went to Kate and I said, hey, Kate, this happened. It was really awesome. And Kate looked at me and she said, why isn't that happening here? And I said, because we don't have staff. That happened only because of a chance meeting between Elizabeth and I. And the amount of work that went into that, it can't be part of our regular diet, you know? And I, I think I have cases to get back to you unless we're going to do it again really soon. Um, so with regards to just the museum, really nothing happens without staff. Volunteers have done great work.
Yeah.
Um, over the years, trustees, uh, Frank McGory, Herbert Hosmer, John Schreemaker Hardy have kind of managed the collection as volunteers though, right? It's not like we can have, uh, operating hours where people can regularly come in at a scheduled time. It just can't happen the way we're arranged right now. The other thing I want to draw to your attention is that Lancaster is, with the exception of Concord, might have collections that most libraries don't deal with. And that is we have a general collection. We have a museum collection. We have a local collection. We have an archives collection. We have a Civil War collection and we have a rare book collection. So that is a full-time job right there. Just to be able to manage that stuff. But more importantly, for outreach, programming, exhibits, we want to take stuff to people. Doesn't mean that they always have to come to us. Uh, there's always been a part of my mind that we would have a 3D object scanning project where we would even have stuff online so that when people wanted to see the real thing. Uh, another quick anecdote is, uh, somebody from the University of Pennsylvania called and this was maybe six or seven years ago, maybe, maybe longer. And he wanted to see one of our powder horns. And I was just amazed that he knew we had powder horns. And that was because of the brilliance of prior administrations that actually indexed what was in the museum and then sent it out to, by snail mail to institutions.
Oh, wow.
And that's how he had one of those indexes. And I said, sure, come on down. And when he left, before he left, I asked him, did you find what you want? And he said, I didn't. But I found something that probably belongs in the Smithsonian. And I said, well, what was that? And we have this revolutionary period powder horn with Gershon Flag's name on it. And it's all scrimshawed. And he goes, you rarely see such an ornate object from that time period. So he didn't find what he was looking for, but he found something more important, which was kind of neat. There's stuff we have that we don't even realize is important. And another anecdote is we did, uh, a museum exhibit with our rare books room, all done by, uh, material, all done by volunteers. Well, in walks Jill Lepore. And Jill Lepore is looking things around and she goes up to Emily Rose and she goes, do you know who that is? And I don't think, Emily, you did at the time, did you?
You asked me about that?
Yeah. It was, it was a descendant of Benjamin Franklin that we have a portrait of. And she was writing a book about Jane Franklin, was the sister of Benjamin Franklin. And she wanted to use what we had on the cover of her book. And if you go into any Barnes and Noble and you look up her book, uh, Book of Ages, uh, it has the library's painting, original, on the cover of it. Uh, so there are things.
I'm going to give her book sold.
I was going to say.
No, you know what? We weren't, we, we never had anything like that happen. And so when her publicist called me, I had no answer. So I just said, how about you come in and do a program for free? And they were happy to do it. And she, she did something really fantastic. So there's things that we're discovering as we go along. And that's only because of lack of either volunteer or professional hours. So just including what we have, it's a Herculean effort to get us to start getting it out to the per, uh, public. What Kate's talking about isn't a Herculean project. It almost seems like an impossible project. And without either hiring a consultant, which won't be cheap, or hiring staff, which has got to be a competitive rate, there's just no way of doing, addressing that. Um, not, there are just not enough hours that someone can devote. One hour a week, you're talking two years maybe until you get a handle on that. There's just so much stuff, good stuff. It is in no particular order. And really, until we know what we have, how to store it, is, can't be determined. So what we could do is probably try to, uh, apply for a preservation survey of the paper we have, um, which will give us a sense of how it's stored. We just had one recently at the library and the controversy over at our end is why are we keeping so many original newspapers? We have original newspapers. And really, most archives will tell you, you don't want to keep those because they disintegrate. You want to get the film. But in any event, so that's what probably needs to happen with your paper on this end. And then on top of that, a digitization project, because I don't know if there's enough space in any location, in any one location to hold that over. But then again, that becomes a space planning, plan, right? How do we do that if we want to keep everything? A lot of it can go to the library, but maybe not all of it. So there are, this is a multi-pronged issue. So every spoke in that, changing my metaphors.
You're just jumping around.
I know. In the spoke, uh, there are, there are, there are many things that need addressing. I mean, I'll give you another example. We have samplers. We probably have, I don't know, 30 samplers. Used to be when we got them preserved, it cost us $1,000, conserve $1,000. The latest one I did was $5,000. So we're not doing those. Um, it's $5,000 a pop. And right now they're backed with, uh, adhesive that was great for the time, but is actually detrimental to it. So really, the only thing I could say is it's difficult to plan without knowing what we're planning for and who's going to do it. Consultants won't be cheap. Staff won't be cheap. And I think you need both. Um, that's, that's basically.
Which is a precursor to FY '25.
Yes.
Which is to say that, um, what you will see and hear about again, um, on the 18th of November is a concerted effort to put a certain amount of money, um, into capital every year for digitization. So last year's money that went in, we just received a quote, um, it's $24,000 to scan the maps that were just on the slide that I showed.
The maps, that's will be the big thing.
The maps were the, and we figured that that was the best use of the first bulk of money because they would be the most useful. And they also, um, depending on which ones we can digitize alone, there's a, there's a chance that we could get rid of all of that paper and have them digitized and then have the library have that in the archives. So that was the first one. And the other thing that I think you will see, um, is that we are, um, petitioning, uh, to, to have an archivist, um, and a museum, I forget the name of it.
Person.
Sorry. Um, and Joe did a very nice job on a write-up of, um, of what that could be.
Homo librarian.
Want to say it again?
Homo sapien, homo librarian.
What do we call this?
I don't think that's what we're calling it.
That's not what we're calling it.
I understand. Not a winner.
Pass this bedtime.
We put that as the job description that Joe wrote as part of the classification and compensation study to try to figure out what is a, a competitive wage for that and figure out how to work that in. Right now, um, that and one other position at the police department are the ones that are, are locked into our budget and we were able to make that work, um, right now without, uh, an increase to the budget, which is great. And that, that is the goal for this year, not to get too ahead of the skis here. But, but just now you understand sort of the impetus behind this is that, again, you know, Waukesus students really got the better, got the better. Wachusett students really got the better, got the better bit of the collection. And we'd like to be able to do that and take care of the assets that we have, that we have a duty.
And that's what's really important. You're right, we're not going to do this overnight. It's going to take time and energy and resources. But identifying the problem is a big part of it, right? And then scaling it, chiefs, are we keeping it from something? No. And then scaling it and prioritizing what needs to be done first. I'm assuming after that, it's death and birth records and other, you know, vital records issues. But like, rolling out a plan for how we attack it over the next several years, I think is really important. And how that then folds into museum revitalization.
And you know, Kate, some of the things that can be digitized, you still have to keep the paper.
Right, yeah.
And the last question I have is for the select board, who pretty much sets the values for the town. And, you know, since I've been here and probably before I've been here, it's been a history. It's our history that's so important. And we get frustrated sometimes when people don't know the history. And if they only came in and asked, if they only came, we're waiting for them. And that's not the way this equation's supposed to work. We're supposed to be bringing it to the residents. We can't be waiting for them to say, oh, yeah, I heard the library has a museum. I, I think this is about everything that we have that we think is historically important. It's a responsibility of the town, one way or another, to bring this value to, not just to say it, but to bring it to the residents. We have a lot of values, tax base, you know, keeping people in the town. These are all really important things. But so is the town's history and the rest. Because if your residents know about the town's history, they'll take pride in the town.
Yeah. We did a huge, which you're just hitting my internal math and calendar. We did a huge 350th celebration.
Oh, yeah.
Which was fantastic.
2003.
2003, yes. My mother was Mary Roll's mom.
Led by, not only than Frank McGory.
My father was on that commission too. Great man, yes, he was. But we have a 375th coming up in five years.
Yes, that's right.
So it's coming about time to start planning for our 375th. And I think the added benefit of that will be getting people to promote the pride they have in our town's history.
Terrific. Kate, we'll follow up.
Great.
That's great. Thank you, guys.
Kate?
It's a question. Do you want to get started on the trustees?
Oh, trustees, yeah. Frank, do you have anything on behalf of the library trustees or any of it in the room, trustees?
Emily.
Emily?
Joe was all set.
All set?
He said it all.
Okay. Okay, there's a shake of a head from the digital and nobody here in the room. Okay, great.
So just a question. First, I, I thank you, it was excellent, both of you, it was an excellent presentation. I agree with you that we need to increase the awareness and then the appreciation will follow. We really need to do it. Because people say, oh, yeah, Lancaster's rich in history, but I don't think people realize how rich sometimes. It's amazing. But the, so the question I had is many of the documents that you're looking at, like the maps, and you referred to the birth records and death records are under the responsibility, I believe, not the maps maybe, the maps probably more planning, but the birth and death records of the clerk, right? And I know that we have spent a lot of money digitizing that. And there certainly looks like there's a lot more to go on that. The, just like the cooperative collaborative program we heard about earlier tonight with the chief, I'm assuming that we're working with the clerk and planning on this too.
Oh, yeah. No, I bet the clerk.
Yeah, and there are dollars, and this sounds strange, but can we digitize things that aren't too rare or difficult to be held, that we haven't, or are we beyond that, on our high-speed scanners or something like that?
Well, you know, I looked into that. If you guys wanted to do all the scanning in-house, with the exception of the plants, you could buy a scanner that will do it and that'll probably run, starting at $40,000. And that would be one that will do the pages and everything else, even on the rare books, because there are archival scanners. Or you could still buy a great scanner that costs less and you could, you'd need a cradle no matter what. And you can have tax abatement people do it. But you know what? These are really rare and I think you want, you can't, well, I don't know if, you want to teach people how to handle something that is irreplaceable.
Yeah, no, 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 some of the rare books would not be.
And I'm assuming some of the people we would hire are insured and have.
Whatever we decide, I mean, I've spoken.
Didn't get that far.
Yeah, I've spoken to somebody who would be willing to consult, but I don't know if they have those.
I was thinking more.
We would not go anywhere near anybody who wasn't bonded and bonded.
No, my caveat was the vital records that were not the priceless vital records from, you know, 1653 or whatever. I was thinking, what, I don't know when we stopped, how far back we digitized.
I don't know if we have it all.
Only like the last couple of years.
Okay.
Most of those records are original. But what past clerks have done, which has been wonderful, is they're in like these preservation binders.
Right.
A lot of the older ones. Mandy now is catching up with sort of the, the years that were immediately before COVID and then through COVID. So, you know, and that comes at a cost. And she's doing that one hour at a time, like he was saying.
Alex, I started before COVID scanning in all of our documents. For instance, when we had the building project, we have to keep all that stuff. But I figured I'd scan it because then it's searchable and it's, you know, easy just to handle. And anything else that isn't currently digital, I'm not done yet.
I believe that.
So that's just the library's collections.
And we have had people, customers, taxpayers, have an appetite for getting things digitally and quickly and immediately, so.
I think that's Kate's point. If we had more digital stuff, then we could just.
Better service.
Well, someone was looking for meeting minutes. I think, did I, I think Joe and Mandy actually went over and found the meeting minutes. Then it was from like the 1930s and they were all in a, in a book, which is great. But they were over there locked up.
Part of it is also creating a rubric that you know how to store stuff, but you also know how to retrieve stuff.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
All right, Kate.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, I want to echo some things that Steve said. But first, I think, I hope we all can agree that we can't do nothing.
Right.
That's the worst thing to do. I'd like to echo Steve's idea to create a plan. We're going to need that. I'm kind of on the other side of the coin, though. Like, I'm not trying to say there's anything wrong with all the awesome, amazing finds we're going to have. But a byproduct of all of this is going to be to free up space and to get rid of things that we don't need anymore. And the reality is we cannot keep everything, period, end of story. And, you know, the building is going to require a path forward, whatever that path is. And we can't have historical or not important things there. So we got to figure out what to do. And, and I'm looking forward to seeing the trash bins fill up with the things we don't need.
So I'm not a type of collector that wants to keep everything. So a policy has to be drafted, right? What determines what is something we want to keep? Is it, you know, something from the school? Is it a desk? I don't think we need to keep a desk from our old schools or anything like that. But there might be things from the school that we want to keep. But the policy from my point of view is if it's old and it relates to Lancaster, we automatically want it. I have a rock that has the kiestalites in them, right? How many of those rocks do I need? People come with me with the rocks, hey, look what I found. I just need one really good specimen and we have it. So that's an example of what you're talking about. You can't have a collection without a policy. It's not a collection at that point.
Yeah, I'm confident we'll come up with a policy. I'm looking forward to the inventory and the matrix shows keep, not keep.
Yeah, yeah.
And then that's a, that's a path forward.
Part of it is just going to be the municipal schedule. I mean, some of the stuff, if we don't need to keep it in paper, digitize it, trash it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks, library trustees, one and all, for being here. Okay, next, I believe is public comment, yes? So public comment, again, a reminder, if you have, if you have a public comment, please come to the podium if you're online, please raise your hand digitally. And then we will call on you after we go through the folks who are in the room. Reminder, public comment, the Supreme Jewish Court tells us we can't tell you what you can and cannot say, but we can tell you how long to say it. So we limit folks to two minutes, Lancaster residents only. I will raise my hand like this when you have one minute to go. I'd like you to be kind to others, but again, the Supreme Jewish Court told me that I can't require that. So have at it. All right.
90 minutes, 30, 94, amazing.
30, also, thank you, name and address. And then if anybody else wants to line up behind any of the line.
When does my two minutes start?
When I say this.
Okay. First of all, one of those headshots of the former selectman is my grandfather, who was a selectman back in the 1953 era, who was a volunteer firefighter and on the auxiliary police. So those things are important to keep, especially for the family members that still live in Lancaster. I think that was a great presentation, but what was missing? What about the historical commission? They were not looped into this. They have records that are just as vital and should be part of this conversation. How could that have been missed? That just seems like a real slap in the face to the people on that commission. Is, is that just, you're saying it's important and there are important things there. Can it be a group effort? It seemed like it was operating in isolation. That's wrong. It shouldn't be that way. You have people that have devoted their time on the commission, also the society, which is the fundraising arm of the Lancaster, you know, to support the commission because they don't have a budget, they don't have money. And it has been ignored. And I know you're not going to answer me, but I would really like an answer. How could this happen? How could it happen? And as the chair of the CPA committee, there are, there is CPA funds that could be used to help digitize public records, historic records. And that didn't, didn't come up at all. And I want to bring that to your attention. And there's a CPA project that is in limbo right now for the, the one that went out to bid for the survey on the Middle Cemetery, which contains the graves of many Civil War soldiers.
Time's up.
Okay, then I might come back because you let people do that before.
Anybody else in the room?
All me.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
Following up on that same thought, why have we been ignored? My name is Heather Lennon, 294 Nicholas Drive in Lancaster. First, I'd like to thank all my supporters as this fiasco has unfolded when Kate Hodges set things in motion by making a false accusation.
Now, so.
On August 3rd, Kate Hodges accused me of misappropriation of town funds, the catalyst for this entire fiasco. This can easily be proved false. And for anyone to say she had nothing to do with it seems very far-fetched. It seems appropriate that I receive an apology. Okay, on August 8th, Steve Carrigan filed a resignation for me with the town clerk. He thus created a false record because he did not even speak with me on the phone until August 9th. The false record created and signed without my knowledge can be substantiated by phone records. It seems that a resignation was considered the easiest way to get rid of me as it doesn't trigger a hearing. The law indicates that, yes, I can be removed for cause and what would be the cause? So I've had no chance to explain. I've had no due process and no public hearing. Why has library director Joe Mullay been rummaging through the historical commission's office? And he has been doing this for like some time. Yes, you have, I ran into you the other day.
It's public comment, I'm not blocking.
Yes, okay. Who tasked him to do this? What is Joe's purpose? When I asked him directly on October 31st, Joe refused to answer me. You who are sitting here tonight are in charge. You have created a dark chapter in town history. What may I ask are your true motives? They should be brought out in the open for full transparency.
Time, thank you. Name and address, please.
Victoria Fetraca, 67 with the Men's Drive. I'm speaking as chair of the Lancaster Affordable Housing Trust. And we wrote a letter to the select board that we sent last Thursday. And the trust wanted it right into the record just to kind of emphasize the message, if you will. So I'm just going to read the letter. I think it's under two minutes. The Lancaster Affordable Housing Trust respectfully provides this public comment regarding affordable housing needs for seniors and disabled individuals in particular. As you know, Bigelow Gardens provides Lancaster's only deeply affordable housing for both seniors and disabled individuals. Bigelow Gardens is consistently full and includes just one, just one mobility impaired unit. The Commonwealth's waitlist of income-eligible individuals applying for housing assistance, including requests for Lancaster, recently reached 22,423 applicants, a huge number. As individuals find housing, they are removed and therefore this is the list of active applicants. Of the waitlisted applicants, 2,243 are elderly and 943 are disabled. Some of these individuals are both elderly and disabled. What do we mean by deeply affordable? Bigelow Gardens is capped at 30% area median income for the eastern Worcester County statistical area. But as a comparison, under Chapter 40B, a developer is required to produce quote-unquote affordable units at 80% area median income. So 30% at Bigelow, 80% for Chapter 40B. Although officially labeled affordable, ironically, these 40B rents and ownership prices remain financially infeasible for many income-eligible households, including within Lancaster. And this has gotten a lot of attention recently on social media. You know, is affordable housing really affordable? In order to make deeply affordable or truly affordable housing financially feasible, a contribution of municipal real estate and/or land is almost always required. Given the April 10th, 2023 confirmation that the memorial school site is restricted to recreational use only, there are virtually no current options for municipally-owned buildings available for conversion to affordable housing and few viable municipal land options. However, should the town move forward to purchase the deCam property at 220, almost not, at 220 Old Common Road, we would like to proactively advocate for mixed-income affordable and market-rate housing. That includes the deeply affordable units reserved for seniors and disabled individuals possible through the contribution of what will become municipal property to a private development partner.
Thank you, Victoria, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
Good evening. George France, 13 Highfield Drive. I wanted to express my excitement about the deCam property. I think this offers so many opportunities for the town to develop and diversify in many different areas. As a member of the planning board, I hope that we get the opportunity to dig into that. I would also like to comment on the discovery of the Homo Librarianus.
That's a better way of saying it, but still not good.
Yeah. When you mentioned that, that the library really has a need and an obligation to reach out and bring history to people instead of waiting for them to come to it, I would direct your attention, if you're not already familiar with it, to a booklet that was authored by Tom Wintle, who was a previous pastor of First Church. And when we first moved into Lancaster in 90, I guess it was, we were given this little booklet. And I'm looking through the thing and it said, when Lancaster was celebrating its centennial, America had a king. Fascinating, interesting. Maybe not that particular booklet, although I'm sure Tom would love to give us the authority to reproduce it. But something that captures the, the beauty and the essence of our cool town. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anybody else in the room? We'll go to the, we'll go through the people who haven't had a chance to speak first. Go through the room for anybody who's had a chance to speak first, and then I can give you a second chance. All right, online, Roy Resack, you can lower your hands and unmute yourself and then do all those things at the same time. And then, he's hidden muted, he's also. Roy?
Yes, can you hear me, Steve?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, say your name and address, please.
Address, yes. Roy Resack, 125 Harbor Road.
Thank you, Roy.
I wanted to say thanks to Kate and the state team and the select board for moving the deCam process forward. As we move to the next stage for more input, analysis, and review, I trust that due consideration will be given to the financial analysis of the various deCam proposals to ensure that the proposals help us with our diversity, to diversify our tax base and to achieving the overall tax diversity metric that some of us have talked about. And secondly, that they will also look. And secondly, that they will also look at the school costs that such... that the different proposals will generate, as well as the revenue, so that we can ensure that the proposals provide a positive education contribution and not a net cost. On one other item, I would just like to suggest that for future Select Boards, that you have public comment first or early in the agenda, so that citizens who have comments on items on the agenda can provide that input to the Select Board before the Select Board votes are issued. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca.
Hi, Rebecca Young Jones, 94 Barnes Court. I am still confused and wondering what the reason is for Heather Lennon not to be on the Historical Society Commission. I'm confused about why she's being forced off, and I'm confused about what good this will do to Lancaster because she's a very valuable resource, she provides a lot of intelligence, and obviously, since there's new excitement about Lancaster's history, she's very needed. So I'm still very confused about what is the issue because, as far as I can see, there shouldn't be any. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Moore. Oh, unmute, sorry.
Martha Moore, 131 Sunset Bridge Road. I am a librarian and archivist by trade, and I am on this meeting because I'm very interested in the Decam project, so again, I reiterate Roy's statement of being excited and happy that it's moving forward because it's much needed and it's a perfect location for these types of things. But I'm also here to seek some clarity. I have been a recent volunteer at the Historical Commission/Society cataloging Herbert Hosmer's puppets and cleaning them up and et cetera, et cetera, getting them ready for exhibit. And the lack of clarity that I'm seeing is I attended a Select Board meeting where they... I think Steve was going to... or the Select Board was going to vote on Heather's resignation only to find out that there wasn't a resignation. And then I attended another Historical Commission meeting, and, well, actually, at the previous meeting, the Select Board did bring in the Historical Commission and cast them with coming up with a new board, reorganizing the board, and so forth to get going, again, I guess would be the word. And then I attended another Historical Commission meeting where we... they did that, they created a new board with two co-chairs, and then the discussion kind of dissolved because we... they realized that they weren't really sure what they would be doing because everything was so confused right now with the absence of Heather.
Martha.
And really understanding the rest of it. So if anyone can bring... And I...
Time's up.
We asked...
Time's up.
The Commission brought in Kate Hodges and asked her for that clarity, and she passed the ball onto the Select Board.
Martha, time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Sheila Mallett.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Sheila Mallett, 2748 North Main Street in Lancaster.
Sheila, before you...
I just wanted...
All right, good.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to get everybody who had their hands up to take them down, just so it's not confusing. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to mention with the traffic light installation, which I'm actually very excited about at Route 70 and 117, I've actually had kind of a long-time concern about a 35-mile-an-hour posted speed limit that's right in front of Luther Burbank and Mary Robinson schools. And I guess it's my hope that there's something that we might be able to do to lower that speed limit. I know all the signage hasn't been put up just yet, but my issue is to make sure that the school zone is kept safe, so I believe it's a public safety issue. And obviously, with Perkins just down the road, I know it doesn't go down to 30 miles an hour until it's at the post office, and I just think that there's something that we should really think about lowering the speed limit on Main Street, especially now with the traffic lights. I think it would be helpful, but as you turn that corner, people see that 35-mile-an-hour zone, that... I'm sorry, the sign, the speed limit.
One minute.
And I just think that, you know, cars really are going too fast, especially with the schools, it's just right there. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila, appreciate it. Susan Munyon.
Yes, thank you, Susan Munyon, 96 Grant Way. Couple things also about Decam. Glad it's getting started and going. Again, we'd really like to keep the cost of the schools for young children, you know, perhaps attending there, and maybe get an over-55-type group or photo-for housing that would need and help support the state. I think, you know, just... I'd really like to see more research done on that, and as we go through, go forward with, you know, town discussion, that that be really discussed further about possibly now over-55 so that we don't have more students and add more cost and debt to our town. And then additionally was, you know, I feel strongly that we should have some discussion about what happened with Heather. I don't believe Heather Lennon for the Historical Society, I don't believe that it was the progress of what all transpired was transparent enough. And I think I would really like to see this Select Board give a storyline, give an explanation because we're losing a valuable person to this town, and you're setting a precedence that makes other people not want to volunteer for other boards and other programs because you're not playing fair, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the room who wants to go first? I just want to make sure. Anybody who wants to go first? Anybody in the hallway, do you want to comment? I don't want to... We can't go to repeats until we have any new... Any... You? Yep, okay. I didn't know if you guys were lining up or conspiring or...
So Kendra Dickinson, 402 Orenway, speaking as a private citizen. Whenever an accusation is thrown out, I'm always one for data. I'd like to see the documentation that supports the claims that the legal counsel that was consulted at the request of the Chair of the Planning Board regarding the event that started the catalyst of this whole situation, and that they were wrong in how they counseled the town. I've seen that documentation. Not many people want to really share it because it highlights the truth. The thing to keep in mind is that these items that are being discussed, and Joe, I love the presentation, never knew we had a Civil War collection, that's so cool, belong to the town and the town's residences, and it's the volunteers and the employees of the town that are currently in place to develop a plan to maintain those. And I'm thrilled to hear that that plan is being discussed and hopefully implemented sooner than later. And I have full faith in our town administrator to yet again go out and apply for grants and do everything she can to facilitate those positive changes. I do find it very disappointing at the hostilities, and I've been in this for just shy of two years now, and I can say that I am also a little rough around the edges and have a couple prickly parts, especially starting out. But I personally withdrew from the CPA Committee as the Planning Board representative because of the negative attitude and energy. We've also had, specific to this event, and it bleeds. It bleeds into other volunteer committees. It doesn't make us want to jump...
Public comment on public engagement.
It doesn't make us want to jump to participate, and it's just disappointing because we have a lot of really knowledgeable and helpful and people who just laden with history here. I wouldn't sign up to be part of that commission to save my life even if I was a native because I feel like I have to bring a shield.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room who hasn't spoken yet? Anybody who has spoken who'd like to speak one more time? Give two more minutes, and then we will...
Okay. First of all, the CPA Committee...
Name and address.
Lineal Lake Conservy, 1394 Main Street, Lancaster, Massachusetts, 01523. Okay, first of all, about historical preservation, you've got to take all the pieces into consideration. The cemeteries, we have three cemeteries on the register. The cemeteries used to be under the library, and now they're under the DPW. And I think when you're talking about preservation and all that, you need to pull in all the players and make sure everyone's on the same page. And the CPA is a new venture, and I've been chairing it, and I consider myself the subject matter expert as a resident. I'm sure there's a lot of people who may know more about it, but we work very hard to get things done. We've got one completed project, there's three more ready to kick off, there's one in limbo, and then Joe's got one for the library windows. And I don't think there's a negative energy unless somebody's bringing it. That's really hurtful. We try really hard to be positive and get our job done. It should be... It's a fun committee because we're doing good for Lancaster, where the funds wouldn't come for historic preservation, affordable housing, or open space and recreation. People need to work together and look at all the pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else, that will be the end of public comment, so thank you all very much. Back to our agenda. Next item up is Town Administrator Report, there is none. The Administration Budget and Policy. So next up is Historical Commission Updates, Next Steps, Support Requests. Yeah, but let me sort of frame something first. So there's... One of the questions that we're trying to answer relative to historic items is some of the stuff that the Historical Commission has has been loaned by the Historical Society. Those things have been requested back. The Historical Commission is going to work to catalog these items and then vote on an approach moving forward, yes, while we hope. No?
I'm sorry, they're already cataloged. They're already cataloged.
Thanks.
I need to get in there to be able to separate them.
Thanks. You're not on the agenda. Thank you. We're taking...
This is my agenda item. I'd really like to talk and...
It is, it is.
At least do so.
Hey, folks, one conversation, and it's us. So it is our meeting. That includes everybody. Thank you. All right, this is Jason's item. I was trying to give some clarity to some items, but let's give it to Jason. It is his item on the agenda.
As an individual member of the Select Board, I have some genuine concerns around the Lancaster Historical Commission. Before I get started, I'd like to give a huge thank you to Karen Silverthorne. Karen is doing yeoman's work in moving the Historical Commission forward today and making it the best version of itself it can be. I have two concerns, and they are both logistical in nature. To be specific, I want to make sure Karen and the current Historical Commission is in a position to be successful, and the Select Board is doing everything it can to work in service to its charge. First, it is my understanding mail and keys may be missing from the Lancaster United States Postal Service Historical Commission mailbox. Based on this, I'm making a motion to authorize the town administrator to open an investigation into potential mail loss from the Historical Commission United States Postal Service Town mailbox. Is there a second?
That's my question.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
First, I've heard of any of this stuff, so I'll go with you because I have questions.
I will. Well, the only way for us to discuss the motion is for there to be a second for the purpose of discussion. So I'll make that motion. I'll make the... I'll second for the purpose of discussion. Do you have any questions? This is the discussion time.
Sure, I have questions. So it's the first I've heard about it. Jason, how'd you hear about that?
I'm not going to say.
Well, so I think if we make, you know, statements or accusations like that, we have to...
I'm making those statements, and I'm going on the record as requesting this...
Okay.
...of my teammates. This is the only avenue I have for this.
No, you're right.
This meeting is the place.
Right.
So I'm not divulging any of my sources. I have genuine concerns. Y'all are my teammates, and I'm making that request.
So this seems to be, as people have alluded to from all walks of lives, a really tense time, especially around...
Felix, could you speak up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I do mumble, I'm soft-spoken. So this, I said, this is a particularly tense time. It's disturbing to hear that keys are missing. Sometimes there's very legitimate reasons for it, and I don't know if we have a full inventory of keys from all different... If we were going to do something like this, which if you've heard something is missing, it would be nice to know if it's not just one of these rumors that we toss out, but if it's a... If you feel that it is a legitimate concern, then we should probably look at a full inventory of all keys and access to mailboxes and who has them and so on. So I would suggest that we broaden the scope and...
I would not be seconding that motion.
Okay. I would suggest that we would broaden scope and just have a policy about that kind of stuff because that's obviously... And if it's... Somebody is missing something, then that sounds like that's a postal service investigation too, if we think mail is missing. So...
So I'm trying to... So you would suggest amending the motion to broaden the investigation to make sure we know who has what keys?
Well, yeah, because we have this anonymous complaint, I guess, about...
It's not anonymous, it's my complaint. It is my complaint, it is not anonymous. I am making this motion.
Okay.
I'm putting my name on it.
No, that's fine, and I'm seeing that you're putting it on it, but I don't think you have the keys or... That's obviously something that did it, and I'm sure it's...
I have a job to do. We all have jobs to do in this board, and I'm doing my really best to represent Lancaster in this situation, all 8,600 of us.
Yes. So rather than have what feels like a very targeted, I think we should definitely make sure that the integrity of town mail is, in general, is slight. So if this has happened once, could it be happening again or not? Then we need to be fair and broaden it and just have a system and a policy for all town departments and look at that.
So let me ask you a question. Would you be in favor of the amendment if... Or, sorry, the motion, if it was investigate what Jason has presented, or ask Kate to investigate what Jason has presented, and then come forward with a policy to prevent a problem like that happening in the future?
I just think... I think that they go hand in hand. I think we need to look...
But his motion doesn't go hand in hand, so I'm just trying. I'm trying to find a way to...
No, I think it's best just to do it quickly, and it can be Kate, it can be Everett, it could be if it...
I really don't understand this at all. I really, really don't.
I'm just trying to be a chair.
If there's a problem, you don't expand the scope to include the world.
I'm trying to be a chair to figure out how we can...
Unbelievable, unbelievable, and I'll be quiet.
First, Jason, I'm trying to calm the tensions here because we have a lot of good people who are on historical and other things. We have a complaint that you're not able to...
You have a job to do. Our job is not to calm tensions when it comes to an investigation.
You let her... You said you'd let her finish, and you're not. So let's let her finish.
Missing mail is a serious concern, and I don't doubt your... And I support anything. If we have something that is missing, we should investigate it. On the other hand, that points to a system fault or system error...
Not necessarily.
...to make if we need to know... Well, I don't have any facts here, so that we should have, yes, a policy and list of keys. So that's for... To me, I don't think it hurts anything. I think that only helps. It gives us an... This is a learning opportunity.
Right. So before I have your response, I think what the investigation could do, and again, we're hearing this motion this evening... I'm, again, we're hearing this motion this evening, is get us some of the information that we would need in order to, did something happen? If so, why, when, with whom, and about what? I try to use all the W's. And then perhaps we can move to the next phase. But what I'm hearing from your colleague is he's not willing to have his motion amended. I don't want to speak for him. I won't do it nearly as colorfully as he will.
He was pretty clear.
And by the way, the word investigation is amorphous at best. It can include any number of things, but please don't.
Missing mail is a big, is a big concern and without having any knowledge or facts or prior knowledge, I just, I do think it's something that needs to be looked at. I agree with Jason. Thank you for bringing it up. I think we should look at, this is an opportunity and I think it's pretty low hanging fruit just to say, let's see who is responsible for the keys and what the policies are about picking stuff up and maybe we will come out with a better project, including historical.
Can I suggest something that, so I'm trying to follow, I'm trying to follow both the threads here and my assumption is frankly, as a town that's been well run, there's a process for who gets key for what building, when, it's pretty well cataloged. That would be my assumption. So I think, which probably how we discovered that there weren't returns of keys, but would you be supportive of the motion if we asked Kate to then present what currently exists if you're a new employee who has graced with a key? Employees, by the way, who are graced with keys and what the, if you were to get that reported out of the next meeting.
Yeah, I was just doing, I think it's important to note that people, there's shared mailboxes. For example, historical shares with, or used to share, I don't know if they still do, with other departments, council on aging, they used to. And so, you know, there's, and other departments in an attempt to save costs on boxes, especially if the smaller departments had shared boxes. So this is important because they do go hand in hand and there's multiple departments involved in the same thing. I think giving the broader perspective helps not only for unity, but also to make it just easier than, easier to do it. I don't see why it would hurt the investigation to look at it through a broad perspective.
Totally hear you. I'm just, what I'm suggesting is that I get that they go hand in glove in your respect and in your presentation. He is asking for an investigation of a specific thing and you're saying you'd love a presentation on how the policy and process works, which I think are both perfectly valid. My question is, can we, can we bifurcate them?
I want a presentation, I just want a broad scope.
Yeah, can we, but can we separate them and act on his motion and then ask Kate to present a, here's what happens with keys, presentation to us at a future meeting?
It's probably more, more important for Kate, for management standpoint, but we can vote, I mean, I think we probably disagree with, so I don't know how you'd vote, but in this case, you'll have to, you can flip a coin, right? I think it's, I think it would be an easier investigation if you were looking at the broader picture anyway, since there are shared, shared mailboxes. But.
Okay. Any comments?
No.
Can you reread your motion so I understand the scope?
I would like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to open an investigation into mail loss from the Lancaster Historical Commission USPS Town mailbox.
So you seconded it?
I did.
You discussed it.
We have.
I know, I was just saying, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was thinking.
All right. But that is the, so the scope is looking at the, at the loss of, it is hard to prove a negative, is what would be my point, on an investigation like that. So it's hard to, it's hard to prove that something was lost if you don't know who was there.
What mail was missing?
Yeah.
I hear you.
Okay. It leaves a broader scope that may be unattainable, but.
I have concerns that there's potential mail loss. I'm looking to have the town administrator look into it. I also stated as part of that motion that I have concerns about keys going missing and not knowing, wanting to understand all of that and how it comes together. I think, I think it's important for Lancaster to make sure we have an understanding of the situation.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
I think in community and unity building and fairness, a broader perspective is a better approach, especially given the shared, reasonable shared cost savings measures that we have with our mail, our mail distribution, that it, broadening the scope would achieve both.
Yeah, and fairness, we're not sure that that's currently the situation, that has been previous to the situation.
Well, we can ask Kate.
We're in the middle of a negotiation of a motion, so Kate sits there.
It's okay.
We can ask her after the vote, but.
Up until recently, I, you know, and probably still, we, there are shared boxes, which is a great idea, so we save some money. But at any rate, so you've heard.
So I'm torn on the, what could be relatively simple motion also could be relatively complex. And I'm, I understand your concern. I'm, my concern is on the scope because I do think it's going to be hard to prove a negative.
I think you achieve your goals, Jason, don't you, with a, with a broader persp, it doesn't hurt your.
No. I don't achieve my goal. I don't achieve what I think is necessary for Lancaster by broadening the scope. It is very concise, it is very specific.
Oh, yeah, I meant to narrow. I'd like to narrow the scope.
Yeah, I just, I'm.
Because I think it's super.
Alex, you're my teammate. We're just not on the same page and I respect you having a different opinion. It's just very different than mine.
Okay. I'm trying to honor yours and you, Eric. Thank you for bringing forward a concern.
Yeah, I honestly am torn on this, which is a first for me. Would you be amenable to us tabling this to the next meeting so I can get time to think more about it?
I would vote against that.
You'd vote against tabling?
Correct.
Okay. So you would be against tabling? In all the ways you can be.
I think it's really important that we get these questions answered now.
I understand. All right. You know, if we make your motion and it fails, you'll have to bring it up again versus us tabling it and then we can just bring it up naturally, right?
I'm aware.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner? Don't say anything if you're not saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Ms. Turner?
Nay.
Mr. Kerrigan, no. That being said, I would like time to consider the parameters and perhaps come back in future time and.
Okay, so second, second, I have a genuine concern about the contents of the Historical Commission office space. Specifically, I want to make sure the contents of the Historical Commission are appropriate and do not contain anything it shouldn't or could put the current Historical Commission or even the town at risk. Based on this, I will make my second motion. Like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to lead the inventory of all contents of the area known to be the Historical Commission office and present this to the select board for review and disposition.
Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okey dokey. Discussion. I'll start this one. I don't know that why, I guess I have more questions about what, I don't know that it's necessary, given that the Historical Commission's appointed by the select board and that's is Kate.
Speak up.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
The purpose of the motion is your.
Let me repeat what I said. I don't know that, I was wondering whether it was necessary because the Historical Commission is appointed by the select board and the town administrator is appointed by the select board. That was my point, rather than, wondering whether or not such a motion was redundant.
Yeah, so, so I have genuine concerns that there may or may not be items in there that are inappropriate and I would like to confirm, I hope they're not, and I would just like to confirm that. And I wouldn't do that without speaking to my teammates first and getting y'all's feedback. And if y'all think that it's not worth the time, it's up to y'all, but I believe that it's in our best interest to inventory the contents and check some boxes and bring it to the board and disposition it.
So I couldn't agree with you more on that. I just don't know that there needs to be a special motion made to authorize Kate to work with the folks to put a plan together.
So that would be my only, I don't know, can I ask a question? Can I work with the commission?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I can authorize you to work with the commission.
Sure, he'll let you do that during discussion.
Yeah, I, yeah, you weren't supposed to ask a question during a discussion.
Don't worry, I was going to get there anyway, but.
If you feel you want this, well, sorry, if anyone feels they want, just tap the table twice as many times, I don't know.
Cough, cough, right?
I mean, I felt, I felt you had that authority already, but go ahead.
So one of the things, so Kate does need the latitude to, to certainly if there's concerns, inappropriate conjures up, it's my mind, I go to really dark places, but, you know, so I don't know what you're talking about, but I know that we have adopted legislation that the Historical Commission, and honestly, any of our boards and commissions, even without that, should have the authority to be able to run themselves, whether it be police, fire, conservation and so on. We tend not to try to ensue ourselves into the working of other boards. However, if there is serious concerns, although it would be helpful to know, because again, these are, first time I'm hearing and they're, and they sound dark and nefarious, we do have a concern about oversight, but I would, I would task Historical Commission with working with that and leading with it with the collaboration of Kate or who Kate's designated, if she's, you know, if she's comfortable with it, because I don't think we should usurp the role of another board, but I think if to put on a mind, if we're, if you have concerns, I'm sure they're genuine, I think it can be done with more than one board, perhaps including, again, I hate to say this, but public safety or something like that, if that's where you're.
It's a really good point. One word you did not hear in my motion was criminal. I didn't put the word criminal in there purposely. I don't, I just, I have concerns that there may be things in there that are, put the town at risk and, and that is not a potential criminal risk, it could be a libel risk, but why I think that it's not a good idea for the Historical Commission to do it is nothing, Historical Commission, my vote of confidence, I opened with that. But should there be something inappropriate or to put the town at risk, they are not the select board and they are not the town administrator. You don't want them finding something that's not appropriate.
No.
So that's why, let me finish, that's why I'm recommending against the Historical Commission and in fact, for the town administrator who is able to see anything that needs to be seen.
So Jason, the extension of this is first, if we include Chief Movie or his, or his, one of his officers or investigators or the historical, but I can't fathom, I mean, that office has been run for years in different places with different things, so I don't know. I don't have your sources, I'm looking at this clean, but what happens if I came in and I said, I think the planning office has something that puts the town at risk. I think the fire department.
You know what I would say, Alex? I would say, you're my teammate and I'd say, you have my support. That's exactly what I would say.
So you should say like, the library, for example, I think that there's dirty books, you know, we should go in there and investigate.
Do you really believe that? Would you like to make a motion and put your name on it and then have the report come back? And then, and then, and then if it says, if it says it's all clean, that's on you. I'm prepared to put my name on this.
I, yeah.
This is not willy nilly. This is not a witch hunt. This is none of those things. This is, in my role as a select, I'm elected to worry about the town.
I know, I know.
And I'm, this isn't, this is not a, 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 trying to, to like pick sides. Like we have a job to do, a real job. And there's real money and real risk involved.
I know your passion.
I understand your point.
I understand, I respect your passion. Thank you for bringing forward your concerns that you're passionate about, Jason. In order to respect other volunteer boards and still meet the concern about the propriety, I guess, of files, I would suggest that this be a collaborative investigation with the Historical Commission and who, if Kate feels that she needs a professional investigator or the police department to include that.
So what's your plan? What's your plan if the Historical Commission finds something?
Hold on, I haven't read my comments yet. So I guess, so I have concerns about things as well. My hope would be that, if I'm, and I don't think I'm hearing your motion right, but is it to, first I thought it was redundant. Is the idea that Kate, we authorize Kate to work with the Historical Commission to just catalog and determine, I know there is, there's importance there to making sure every, we know frankly the providence of as much of that stuff as we can, you know, does, does all of it belong to us? If not, is it on a loan? What are the terms of the loan? If, and my understanding the Historical Society would like some of the things they've loaned to us, if not all of them back, so managing that process seems to make sense. And as our representative, having Kate engaged in that process with the Historical Commission, leadership makes sense. Is that what you're intending to accomplish with your motion or?
So to be specific, so the motion reads, town administrator to lead the inventory. Now, it was very specific on those words. I'm of the opinion that Kate Hodges may well go down as the best thing that ever happened to Lancaster. And I think that it's critical that the lead here is figuring out what to do. She is the expert, we are not the experts, and that is why I'm phrasing the motion the way I am.
So follow question. By leading the investigator, not investigator, inventory.
Yep.
That doesn't preclude her from working with the Historical Commission to accomplish.
If she thinks that's the right thing to do, it's completely up to her. She has my political trust.
Then with that wording, I'm supportive of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of Ms. Hodges? Because I know we're discussing, but I have some information.
Sure. We've already done it once, I'm not supposed to, but, what's your question?
So we have.
Limited, hopefully.
Yeah. We have a statute that authorizes the Historical Commission, that they are essentially auton, they don't have police powers like the Board of Health.
Sure.
But they are autonomous. The board is responsible for, it's been presented to us, I know Jason just looked at it a couple of times, and we, the town adopted that. I'm not sure that Kate has, and I don't want to put her, I know she has the capability and she's fully competent to lead this, but I don't think she has the authority to do this.
I could say that if she doesn't, she'll come back and tell us, but I would like to hear that.
Well, that's why I was just asking her. But the other thing is, I think just best practice is having other, that we suggest other parties do this, because I don't want to, I don't want to be seen as, as this being punitive or censor, censorship or any of that kind of stuff, but we do have to make sure things are maintained. But, you know, for example, when, you know, one thing now, things that we're looking at historically as a country, we're looking back at documents which were seen as racy or inappropriate are now part of our dark, dark history.
And I think that goes to the scope of, and I don't think anyone's, I don't think this envision's Kate being the arbiter of what's historic. This is just a matter of saying like, this, let me explain, like this, this belongs to the Historical Society or there's a standard, like this is on a list, an affidavit of this, making sure that the Historical Commission, which would have to sign the affidavit to hand that stuff back over to anybody who loaned something to the town, that that is done in the proper way to cover both the Historical Commission and the town, and by the way, the lender of that.
I don't think that's what he was saying. He said there's inappropriate things.
I didn't say inappropriate. I said, I didn't say there are inappropriate things. I said I want to ensure that everything that is there is appropriate. Appropriate is an amorphous word. Did I use that right?
You didn't say amorphous, right? But you used it, right?
I'm working on it.
You used it, right, you shouldn't say, it's okay.
But, but let's, so I'm not making, I encourage everyone to reread my motions, there's no accusations in there. My role is to ensure. My role is to ensure that the town is not at risk, I want to make sure the town isn't, my first motion was ensuring that we're not missing mail, real straightforward. Second motion is to ensure that everything in there is appropriate, really straightforward. And I can't wait to come back here and eat crow. I'll be the first one here to say, you know what, I was wrong. If I'm not wrong, if I'm not wrong.
Do you want us to eat crow?
No, no.
So I read as everything there is appropriate means that anything that's, um, returned to a lender or, you know, belongs to a different location, um, that all of that is addressed. That's what I deem as, things that are in there are appropriate, that they're in their appropriate place, being cared for in the appropriate manner. And I think that's, that's appropriate, um, to make sure that, and, and I think frankly, the Historical Commission will likely, um, well, well, I know will benefit from Kate's support in this effort because of all of the different tools that come into play with affidavits relative to ownership and things like that.
So in that case, there's no problem in having historical work side by side with Kate, right?
So nothing in his motion, um, precludes that?
I, I understand.
I'm asking Kate to delete it, because I think she's the right person to do it. And Kate thinks that another commission should be involved, whomever, whomever Kate thinks, whoever she thinks is the best. I, I trust her.
Okay. I think we've circled this drain many times, um, and we've used some words that we haven't used in a while, so it's nice. Some of us apparently ever.
Certainly the amorphous drain?
Yeah, um, all right. Any further discussion, God willing? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Or you just shout out which one you want.
As, as you would say, I'm very confused by this whole thing, but I could say nay, because I just want to make sure, yes in spirit, but I want to make sure that historical is side by side with.
Put a nay with an asterisk and put yes in spirit next to it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, those are the two items I wanted to bring up. If you had more.
That was a lot more than I.
That was a lot more than I expected to do. But okay, all right. Now, uh, on to, um, Government Study Committee, Additional Discussion, Ray Vacancies and Other Business Continued from our October sixteenth Select Board Meeting. So we had a conversation at our previous meeting about vacancies relative to the Government Study Committee. I had, and I couldn't tell you what meeting, a number of meetings ago, indicated that I no longer wish to serve as the Select Board's designate of the Government Study Committee. Mr. Allison expressed concerns at the succeeding meeting about doing the same. Since we have received several resignations of members, um, who were appointed by this body, both voting members and town employees, who did not feel, um, uh, I don't want to use, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but did not feel comforted or supported in, in, in participating in that effort anymore, and have asked to be released from their responsibilities. To me, um, a few things. First, I, I thank all the volunteers for, for the work that they do for our town, and we appreciate it. I thank the town employees, particularly those, no dig at Kate, because she doesn't live in Lancaster, she used to, uh, but those who've lived in Lancaster their entire lives and have really hold up their, their citizenship and residency of this great town as a badge of honor, um, and frankly, who wear badges with the very name of our town on them. I thank you for the service to this committee, because I think it's important. What I, I, what I'd like to present to the boards, the idea that, that we suggested, because we've done a year plus of meetings, we did a study, we've done a lot of benchmarking, and Ogilvy did a lot of benchmarking, which was great. The charge of this committee, a reminder to folks, was to look at other forms of government, do an analysis of ours, and then come back to this board with a recommendation whether or not to recommend a charter commission to the annual town meeting. At which point, the, this board would either go along with the recommendation, read the report, go along with the recommendation, what have you, and either, and either, um, accept the recommendation or not. And, uh, I think we're sort of there. And so I, what, what the committee wasn't supposed to do, or isn't part of their charge, at least as the first chair of the committee, was to make or presuppose some conclusions that the Charter Commission could make or not make. Which is fine, it's great to have the conversations in the, in the debating and in the discussions. But, uh, so what I would ask, um, my board colleagues or teammates, as Mr. Allison refers to us, um, although I was always terrible at sports, I'm not sure you want me on your team, um, but I would ask that we ask the Government Study Committee to, um, present their reports at either our next regularly scheduled meeting or at the next regularly scheduled meeting. After we receive the, the same, uh, we can relieve them of their duties and thank them for their service to the town. Yes.
Yeah, I think you're, I brought this up last meeting, and I don't want to rehash, but the, the number of resignations has definitely been surprising.
Saggery.
And, you know, I, I think I said, I'll say it again, I don't think you can fault folks for trying, and then that environment is not for everybody, and it is what it is. So I think your point about, you know, let's, that, that the residents voted on it, let's do the best we can with what we got, and, and request, make a request for the response, I think that's spot on, so I'm, I'm fully supportive of that.
Okay. Comments, thoughts?
Yeah, so I think that, um, we've been, um, impaneling committees and disimpaneling them and re-impaneling them. For example, the Memorial School Committee, you know, was on and, um, then off and on, and.
I can only speak to the work that we do in this board. We have had three different re-use committees.
No, we did it, we, no, 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 I mean, we impaneled, that's true, you did not, that's right, it's pre-Kate, pre-Steve. That's true.
The one we're working with came up with the recommendation.
And the Government Study Committee, um, I watch, I watch the meetings, there haven't been many meetings, because everybody's just been really busy and doing other things. So they really haven't had a whole, uh, time. I watched the last meeting and it seemed to be effective. I know that, um, we have a couple of ex officio members.
Not anymore, yes.
Well, we had Mike and Everett, Mike isn't able to do it right now, and, um, I'm trying to think of who else recently resigned.
Dave Milat.
Oh, did Dave resign?
Right?
I didn't see.
Yeah, we're down a significant, well, I think it just recently happened.
Oh, okay, so we, I didn't realize that. So we had, um, I think we voted seven members, and we had.
Nine, was it? Was it nine?
Seven was attending.
Seven, oh, okay, then it was seven.
I think.
Oh, because the non-voting members were, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then we had the ex officio ones, right? So when we have vacancies on anything from library to planning or whatever, we had to do it planning, we put out a call for people and we, and we seek them. Right now, how many members are on the board, are on the commission right now?
So I, I think for, yeah, so I, I would say, I agree with you, for non-ad hoc committees. This, and, and many members of the committee, um, will remind us on a regular basis, uh, that there was a timeframe for us to provide the report, and I will own what I need to as the former chair for not moving it quickly enough. But there were, more often than not, we would show up for a meeting and we wouldn't have quorum. Honestly, the, um, the membership became, um, somewhat disenchanted, and that's why you've seen a, a rash of, of resignations, but still work got done. And I frankly think to meet the mandate of this committee, which was to do some benchmarking, look at forms of government, and then come to this board with a recommendation, uh, on how to approach the annual town meeting, whether or not to, to, to push for a charter commission, I think, you know, my, my, my belief fervently is that they have the, the information they need to make such a recommendation. But I don't think it makes sense to repopulate a committee with three or four new people when they are ninety-five percent, ninety-nine percent of the way down the road.
No, I do think they should come and present to us, but if after that, we discuss, at this point, knowing what I know, I would say we absolutely shouldn't, because I think we already have demoralized a lot of volunteers. In the last year, we've seen tremendous.
Well, that's very good, we have not demoralized volunteers.
Well, I think, no, I do, I think this.
I, 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 I will not accept that.
I know, I know. And I, I will take my, my blame for it, because I think that this is, this kind of thing demoralizes them, so.
What, what part of this demoralize, I, no, you can't send a public meeting and say, I've demoralized volunteers and not backing up.
I'm saying, not you, I'm not pointing fingers at you.
You did say we, okay.
I said we, being a board, but I'm just saying, um, changing the status of committees like that, last year, um, a citizen brought up a petition to have a five-member board of selectmen, for example, and we, we, the board, said, no, because this should, we sug-, our, our opinion that we spoke was, do not bring that out, this belongs from the Government Study Committee, and it can be brought out next year by the Government Study Committee.
No.
That was.
No, I want to be very clear, because I don't want any, this is how things run down the street, become a whole new story. The issue is, government structural things like that are for the Charter Commission if we have one. Not for Government Study Committee to recommend a gay, nay, or indifferent, but the Government Study Commission, the Government Study Committee was in the process of whether or not to recommend a Charter Commission.
You could certainly do a five-member.
Let me just finish what the, what, because I spoke against at a town meeting.
Yes.
And it was because the Study Committee was in the process of whether or not to recommend we have a, a change to our, well, create a charter after three hundred and seventy years. And so, um, that process I felt needed to play out, rather than cherry pick specific, although large parts of town government to change by citizen's petition, which is perfectly valid, we change things, we celebrate citizen-led government. But I, I don't want anyone to watch this or leave this meeting thinking that we said, no, we don't want it, because Government Study Committee is going to study it. That's not it at all. It was that they're going to make a report to us about whether or not we should have a Charter Commission. The Charter Commission, of course, can consider anything that they'd like relative to town government, one of which the items would likely be the size of a lot of our boards appointed and elected.
So then I misunderstood you at town meeting, because I thought that that was, that was what you said, and I apologize, I'll look at that again. But there are many communities that had different sized select boards, with, not without a charter.
Right, but this is, but we're not relitigating the size of our select board at this meeting.
No, 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 I'm just saying, for example, so it's not like we have a charter or Government Study Committee, or we don't change things, that's not, that, that's overly simplified.
No, what I'm trying to overly simplify is, before I was on this board, the annual town meeting voted to create a Government Study Committee for the express purpose in the, the, the warrant article, to do the research and present a report to the Select Board within a certain period of time, which we did miss the deadline, um, that recommends whether or not the town should enter into a Charter Commission.
Okay, that wasn't what I read last week, but we can, let's have them, let's have them come in and talk about.
I would like them to come in with a report about what their findings are. So.
Do we, do you need a motion?
Yes.
What would the motion be?
I mean, we're not in public comment, but, no. Emily, do you have a quick comment? We're not in public comment, so we don't usually go to.
Just the chair.
I understand.
I have a, I have a productive comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, so, Emily Taylor, six thirty-four Main Street. I've been on the Government Study Committee since the beginning, um, and we're excited to do it. I think it's true, it is, you know, unequivocally true that we got off to a slow start. I think part of that is because, and you know, Steve, I think you could attest to this, and Kate as well, there was a lot of ramp up, um, to sort of get to where we needed, because, and, you know, apparently this is like the word of the day, but it was almost, you know, an amorphous thing that we were looking at. And there was a lot of, you know, Kate did a great civics lesson on what a code is versus what a charter is, and was very explicit that the code is really complicated and cumbersome, and, you know, optimum versus MGL, and it's just, you know, I, you know, Kate, like, what I thought would be a simple question, she, and she said, she kind of, I could hear her breathe and be like, well, it's actually a really long answer.
I did provide a short one.
So I just wanted to say a couple things.
She said she did provide you with a short answer, so that's good.
Pardon?
She said she provided you with a short answer, but, um, it is.
She did, she did.
It's just unusual that I can.
There was an aster.
There was an aster.
And a helpful answer, and I appreciate it, um, how quickly she got back to me.
Yeah.
I, um, I have two other things to say, and I'm stumbling on the order of that. One is that, um, so I was elected as the chair at our last meeting, last Monday.
Congratulations.
And we had, um, yeah, thank you for my co-committee for nominating me, we had a really productive meeting. It sort of felt like, um, you know, we had been in like this beta phase earlier, and we were like getting our minds and as a group, like, around what, what is the goal? And I know it's articulated very clearly, but even some clearly articulated goals still have a lot of nuance and are difficult to unpack. We had a great meeting, um, we have, um, a work plan in place, we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday, um, we have, um, and what we're doing is, we have put out a survey, and it was distributed mostly by the town. And I would really like to put a pin in this, that the survey was developed in concert with the town administrator.
Yes.
and his local representative. So if it wasn't the right question, there was a time to say that.
Yeah, no, I, I love the survey.
We have great data, we have about two hundred and seventy respondents, two hundred and sixty respondents. We, uh, we, last Monday, we went through and we looked at, okay, what are, what are the statistics saying that people clearly want? And I understand that there's a bit of rub between whether or not, you know, that was the mandate, or it's only about whether or not to do a charter, but really to find a root cause analysis of, do we need a chart, like, what's not working with the code? We needed to ask what's working and what's not working, or what's meeting people's expectations or not meeting people's expectations or needs vis a vis town government. So, we have data, we will, our report, I mean, I have a research background, our report will have minimal opinion, if any. It will be a reflection, it'll be a synopsis and a summary and a reflection of the data that we've collected from town residents, from a survey developed in concert with the town administrator and his local representative, and distributed through the town. We did not get a chance as the Government Study Committee to be the ones to launch the survey, um, so I'm feeling a bit, so, okay, so I said I had a productive comment. My productive comment is, could we, um, instead of presenting a report to you next time, could we present a detailed work plan? Because we're, I'm in the midst of doing that right now, um, and a sort of skeleton summary of the topics we're looking at. And to be clear, we're looking at these topics, that doesn't mean they will be in the final report, they are the ones that, I use the term bubbled up, from the survey, to be very, very clear, things that, you know, more than fifty percent of respondents said one way or the other. So I think it would be a disservice to dissolve the committee, I would be personally disappointed. I would be disappointed because I'm excited to do this, um, with the town and for the town, um, and with my peers, and I would respectfully ask that instead of, um, asking for a full report in two weeks, which is.
No, yeah, I was going to kick it out further than that, yeah.
I would like to propose that we, that we produce a work plan, um,
In your work plan?
And a skeleton report, um, and that we are allowed to continue our work.
In your, um, so, thank you for all that. In your work plan, uh, what, what is your tentative date for report presentation? What do you think?
So the goal, and the original mandate was to have something for town meeting May twenty twenty-three.
Right.
So now the goal is to have something for town meeting May twenty twenty-four, which means having it all buttoned up, um, I think in mid-March, um, so that it can be vetted and go on the warrant. If that's the wrong date, let me know, but our, our deadline is the warrant deadline.
Well, so the warrant deadline supposes we have no real time to review it, so, um, can we?
What I'm saying is that our deadline is relative to the warrant deadline, so if you tell me that, I will make sure that our report is done four weeks before then, for review, to be considered for the warrant. But the warrant is our, our, you know, goal point, because that was the original, that if we would present something at town meeting, and then thereafter, the committee would dissolve. So.
What was the original, was it, I thought the original date was like, and I'm not picking nits, I'm just trying to remind myself, was it like January or early February? I can't remember.
Maybe it was February, but I'm, I'm trying to look up the warrant.
She's trying to look up.
Deadline, because it would have been on that, um, budget calendar.
I mean, obviously, I'd love to see a report sooner or later, but I understand, I, I appreciate that you've got a plan and you're working it, and I, I celebrate that. Can we aim for sometime end of the year or January? Like, end of January?
For a full rec-, I think for a full report, um, so, one of our, the parts of our work plan is, we did get a statistically significant response for our survey, with two hundred and seventy, um, people responding. We'd like to drill down into the four or five topics that really bubbled up as big things. We'd like, and we have a plan, and Ogilvy is working, um, Um, we'd like, and we have a plan, um, and Ogleby is working, um, on a plan and each committee member will be taking on one of those buckets and, um, spearheading the deep dive into that, which would include, you know, solicitation of letters, um, public comment at our meetings, which we are starting, we're going to include starting on Monday. Um, office hours or an open meeting, uh, or other ways, um, of getting more information, including from town employees, which was a part of our original plan.
Jason, uh, Emily, Jason Nelson here. So Kate just passed me a nice note here, which says the, the warrant opens February nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, what about, what about a, a first draft? Maybe a first draft by maybe something like Jan ten, right? Just a first draft?
Absolutely.
Um, that the, you know, everybody can just come and think that. I think the worst case scenario is to present something at town meeting that not everyone gets. Um, and maybe the, maybe the context is not what people are expecting. It would just, if there could be a first draft, like something like that.
That sounds good.
Does that sound reasonable? Then we can all just give feedback and, uh, in my perfect world, in my perfect world, folks have an opportunity to endorse or provide feedback at town meeting. If it's presented at a time meeting for the first time, it's more of a reaction and less of a, like a conversation. Does that, does that make sense?
It does. Can you expand on what you mean by, um, wanting to make sure that people get it? You, you mean you want it to be socialized to the town well before appearing?
Yeah, I'm just kind of trying to curb, like, like if, if your average Joe or Jane resident read it and be like, what is this? Like, you don't want that. You want, you know, nothing against any committee. I'm just, the more it gets iterated on, the better, I think, for everybody.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I, um, I think I can speak on behalf of the committee, um, as the chair, and I can say that we could absolutely have a first draft to you, um, the second week in January.
Mr. Chair, sorry for, for stepping on your toes with something like that work?
That's fine.
All right, I can't, I can't hear Jason.
Nobody wants to, but we have to anyway. Um, he was just asking if that would meet my, uh, I mean, I would rather frankly, have first draft before the holidays, but if you can't, if you say it makes sense to do it in early January, then I think that I'm fine with that, um, so that we can-
I think the first draft could be ready before, before the winter holidays. I think it would lack some of the synthesizing that we intend to do with the solicitation of public comment.
Yeah, things get hard with, deliverables get hard at Thanksgiving because then you roll up on Christmas.
You're only a couple of weeks away from Thanksgiving.
Right, I just, I, I, I would, uh, I'd love to get ahold of it sooner rather than later. But, um, if it's the board's decision.
I would too, I would too, but we also went about three months this summer with no meeting.
I know.
But respectfully, you were the chair at the time. And so I feel that we are being sort of penalized for not being quickly enough when meetings-
You're not being penalized, Emily, we were having a perfectly pleasant conversation. You're not being penalized. Uh, we, we went without meetings because we couldn't get a quorum and then we put out a survey and waited for the results of the survey. So, um, I'm glad to go to middle of January for a first draft.
Uh, that would be the, like, Jan ten.
Jan ten's fine.
Yeah, early. Cause the, so the warrant, warrant opens Feb nineteen. I was targeting like six weeks prior to opening of the warrant. I think getting enough time for iterating meetings, etc.
That's five weeks, but yeah.
When does the warrant close?
Uh, April first.
Okay.
Okay, we will work with the January tenth deadline for a, like a, a well fleshed out first draft.
Awesome. And then, um, we'll, we'll look at our agendas for the next two meetings, see which is the lightest, and we'd love to hear your work plan and have you come in and sort of take us, and more importantly, the town through the work plan, so.
Absolutely.
We will be back in touch. Awesome, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
No, thank you, that was helpful. You did give a productive comment, so I appreciate that. Those are always welcome.
I said I would.
Yes. Um, all right. Um, uh, there's no action necessary there, yes? Uh, MOU, this is, um, Alex, your item on the agenda.
Yeah, um, honestly, I didn't realize that this relies to the level of a formal agenda item, but that's good. It was just a, well, I wouldn't believe it, I didn't know it was going to be like a bull here. All I was asking was an, an update. Since the, um, since, congratulations. My understanding is both the zoning articles have passed all the hurdles that they have to, both for the four D R and for the, um, business, the industrial zoning. That triggers, um, or certifies, ratifies the MO, are we calling it MOU or MOA?
Sure.
Uh, one of those, um, for North Lancaster. And people are very excited about that because that ushers in possible development and tax relief, right? If so, um, my, my hope was, and I don't know, I can't have to look back on it. I had planned on doing that, is when they, when it passed, I think that, my understanding is the Capital Group was supposed to give us parcels that they owed us, and I didn't know if they'd given those all to us yet.
So originally they were supposed to give it to us in phases. Um, and, um, they have agreed to, Kate and I, to give it to us in one big bulk.
Are they giving us all of them?
All of it at once.
That's wonderful.
And not at once later, at once now.
Now?
Yes, so, um.
That's fantastic. I thought we were giving it to us.
They were giving it to us in, I think, was it six sections or three sections or some?
Three, I think, over here.
Three, four sections, according to my friend with bad eyesight in the back. Um, uh, so, yeah, we are getting all seventy-something acres now.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Was it seventy, wasn't it eighty-something-six? No, was it seventy-six?
She said seventy-six.
Okay, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure. No, 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 it's been, well, look at that. The other question, the elephant in the room is, I think people know that there's, um, that the MOU, MOAs were cosigned both by Steve Boucher and the Capital Group.
Yeah.
Different names, and they are currently in court, um, with disagreements about who owns, who has rights to the land.
Lots of people are in court.
Yeah, that's not, that's not an issue for us to-
No, 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 but it's, it's relevant because some of the ownership of these parcels, among other things, who is responsible?
These parcels have had, um, deeds ready to transfer for a long time, right? And then there was all, it was all written up and then ready to transfer over to us in increments. Now they're transferring it all at once.
I think that's the, the land.
Yes, speculating on.
Yeah, but I, but relative to the development land.
What was that? And then the other, there's so many other different provisions in the-
Yeah, we, I mean, we can't speculate on private litigation, that's on-
The land they're dating to us, though, and giving to us is not, is not part of that.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to say I respectfully disagree that there's any elephant, um, in this room. Um, I think everything is going great.